She didn't get the majority, so she'll have a...
Welcome to the twentieth budget study session of the City of Glendale. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Drayman, Friedman, Najarian, Weaver, Mayor Quintero.
Here. May we have your report.
This is a special meeting of the City Council and the agenda was posted on the Bolton Board outside City Hall in accordance with the Brown Act. Today we have Director of the Ministry of Services, Finance regarding citywide budget study session discussions, City Treasurer, City Clerk, Community Development and Housing, Glendale Water and Power, Fire Department, Police, and other citywide budget issues to be discussed.
Mr. Starbury.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I'm going to go directly to Bob McFaul, but first want to make a brief prefatory comment. This is your third budget study session. Your staff, the budget team, the departments have been working very actively to prepare the information that you've been receiving over the course of these study sessions. I do need to say, though, that it is a bit of a work in progress. We continue to work on refining the revenue numbers and as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, they do become clearer. But of course, with the implications of yesterday's statewide ballot, we as yet have this bit of a dark cloud looming out there, which is how is the state's fiscal crisis going to impact us directly? It has certainly impacted us indirectly. The increase in the sales tax revenues, the increase in motor vehicle license fees, that is certainly going to impact automobile sales and I think continues to be a depressive factor in the economy, and that will show up if it hasn't already in our sales tax revenues. But how it might affect us directly as the state begins to grapple with its significant problem remains to be seen. We do know that the Department of Finance has proposed to the governor that there be a direct takeaway from cities, counties, and special districts of about $2 billion. My guess is that could get larger as they continue to try to find a way to plug that monstrous hole in their budget. And there are a number of indirect ways that the state's problems could affect us. We were just talking this morning about what the state charges us for administering property tax revenues, that is, receiving them from the residents and passing them through to the various taxing jurisdictions. That number is somewhere just shy of $800,000 and has grown significantly over the past several years as the county and the state have looked for ways to support their operations. The VLF revenues, we've seen those dwindle because they are now tacking on administrative costs. So all of that means that as the state continues to grapple with its problem, we will no doubt feel the effects of it directly and indirectly here locally. My take-home message here is that this is a bit of a work in progress. We're bringing you numbers as best as we can estimate them, working very hard. Bob McFaul, Michelle Flynn, Bob Elliott, literally 15, 16 or more hours a day trying to stay on top of the numbers and frankly, trying to revise the numbers so we can be as accurate as we possibly can be. But it does continue to be a bit of a work in progress. With that, we will, as we close in on the final study sessions here toward the end, attempt to give you a recap. The end of tomorrow will give you a bit of a recap as to where we believe we stand currently. But we'll continue to try and be as realistic, although leaning toward conservative, as we can be. With that, let me go to Bob McFaul.
Thank you, Mr. Starbury. Mr. Mayor, members of council. First, a bit of housekeeping based on some requests that council had made at our previous budget study session. I refer to this notebook, and I want to note that these are recycled binders, thus the yellowing, the torn pages and all. We have gone to every effort to try to pull as many recycled ones as we could because we are looking...
But it is the current budget, I assume.
It is the current, but this is not a recycled budget.
Okay.
If you see any lines are white out on there, we didn't intend that. The first section should be a tab indicating fleet vehicles, and this is also work in progress. This is as we are refining the new structure on the consolidated fleet management unit, we'll want to provide that information to council. What we provided here at this point is the new structure that is in place, both financially from an accounting perspective, but then also, of course, from the actual garage itself. And then the next two pages are the list of equipment items that have actually been reduced. What we haven't had, and we will get you shortly, is just the larger numbers. How many pieces of equipment we had to begin with, how may it have been reduced, and therefore what the remaining fleet size is, and recognizing that is going to continue to be refined in particular as we bring on the new fleet manager. So that was the first section. The next section is the take-home vehicles. This is a list of all of the take-home vehicles that are remaining, that are being recommended by departments, along with a brief explanation on those that departments, the department heads feel need to continue to be taken home. The first part of this report, it's indicated as Section A, Take-Home Vehicle Reduction Summary. The first column shows the departments that previously and currently had vehicles that were taken home. It was only just a few departments to begin with, and with the previous number of take-home vehicles as 105. Currently, based on current department recommendation, two departments have actually gone to where they have no vehicles that are being taken home. Three other departments, for operational or other reasons, are continuing to recommend vehicles being taken home, but the 105 is reduced by 45 for a total of 60 vehicles currently being taken home. Rough numbers, that's about 60 vehicles out of a vehicle inventory of approximately 800 vehicles. Within then, the sections goes to, first starts with GWP, Electric and Water, and gives a amount of information, the vehicle type, the job title of the person who takes the vehicle home, and then the explanation, the justification for that. Very honestly, I think you could break this into two categories of explanations why vehicles are taken home. The first is a job necessity. There's emergency recall of such frequency, special equipment required where they're taking a vehicle home simply makes sense. The other is that it is a part of the industry standard for a position, literally is associated with a total compensation package, whether it be an auto allowance that is provided or in the case primarily in public safety of a vehicle in lieu of an auto allowance because they are safety equipped. So in that case, it isn't necessarily because every day they come back on a recall, but that that is simply part of the industry norm for that position as auto allowance itself would be. And in other cases, it's a blend, a blend of those two things. So that's just full disclosure, that is noted on here, the explanations for that. The three departments that now have vehicles that are taken home is GWP, Police, and Fire. All three of those departments are presenting to council their budgets today, so if you have specific questions on these, certainly we can address them now or you could address them during the department presentations.
Are there any questions? Just take-home vehicles?
Just a comment. What, Mr. Mayor, what would be helpful, perhaps another time, but what would be helpful is to know how often these take-home vehicles in some of these categories are being pressed into service, for example. And I'm not picking this for any other reason, my eye just happened to land on this one where it's talking about the assignment justification, and it talks about project management support by providing after-hours, evenings and weekends inspections, contractor support for water systems projects, including water sample collection and analysis. How often has that vehicle been pressed into emergency services after hours and weekends? And then what does that mean? If it's 10 times in a year, is that low frequency? Is that high frequency? Is it moderate? Without that, you know, first of all, I want to just, I think that the reductions that have been done are, it's really something to be, well, I'm never sure what adjective to use at this point because we're cutting and cutting and cutting, and everything that's cut is something one department or another's muscle, so to speak, but I, it's a very good effort. Question is, still in my mind, what does this mean? Without some kind of numbers, it's hard to know what this actually means.
We actually had a scientist or internal audit unit, so as you can imagine, they have those kinds of details.
All right, so did Mr. Fox have a take-home vehicle in order to do that project?
Yeah, he tried, but the, those were in fact some of the reasons why the reductions. There actually, there was a, we looked at round-trip distance, commute distance versus actually work distance, work miles versus commute miles, work costs versus commute costs, number of times of response, you know, practically speaking, how many times did they actually have to come in? Why was it important to come in? Was the urgency of response so critical that you needed to respond right to the site versus going to the yard and picking up a vehicle and taking it back out again? That's an excellent point, and we can provide additional information, and departments need to be able to explain, for example, that very thing. How many times does that person actually have to come in on emergency recall?
Let me suggest you have the three departments that have take-home vehicles yet to come before you, and I'd suggest we get into that conversation with the departments when they come up and make their presentations. They can give you a better view as to how it is they feel these continued take-home vehicles are justified as they go through their budgets.
Let me ask a couple of questions, and actually, when GWP comes up, maybe they can answer them. I'm just curious, some of these, the project manager that has an '05 Ford Ranger pickup truck and so forth, I guess what I'm curious about is their equipment on that pickup truck that is used for these sample collection analysis? That's one question. The same with the Ford vans, the big Ford 150 vans, I'm sure they're, they probably have equipment aboard those vans that can go directly to the site and help support, but I do want to have that question answered. But then here is a 2008 Ford Expedition SUV. I'm curious whether the big Expedition also has equipment on it that needs to go directly to the site and respond. Then with police, obviously canine handler, you've got the dog in the back with the cage. The undercover vehicles, the same way. Then when you go further down, MOU negotiated, so obviously the command staff, lieutenants and captains, they would have to willingly give up their sedans. We can't impose, we can't impose that.
Those are contained within their respective MOUs, correct?
Right. And then with Fire, the same way. Some of the trucks there, the F-150 pickup, I'm curious whether that has any special equipment that's used to respond for a particular type of emergency or fire. Okay, any other questions? Am I right?
Then the next section is the Employee Health Services, and again, a lot more detail to come on this, but this outlines the services that are provided by Employee Health Services in a very broad, broad sense, and then provides us a certain level of detail, just a summary of the budget and a summary of the current staffing. And once again, this is, RFP is actually close to being ready to be released on this to look at a multitude of other ways that the service can be provided. This is also coupled with a summary and survey of how other agencies are providing it and even going beyond that, working with our current key and and associates, our current administrators for healthcare to see how they see other agencies doing, it's looking at a variety of ways that can be done. The management, this is a tab that we will be providing a report. We've had a member of the public who has made an observation on the growth of employees and growth of management. This is information that's coming out of the Workplace Demographics Report, which is actually not a reflection of employee count. It is a reflection of how many employees have occupied a position, and so there actually is not a correlation between the demographics report and the actual employee count, but we can understand how confusion would be drawn. So we are reconciling that, and we'll have a report that will show how that's reconciled. Paramedic transfer, the Fire Department will be presenting today a recommendation on modifying the paramedic program. This is a report from Chief Harold Scoggins that goes into some detail on how that would occur for your reference. And then we have provided, at this point in time, a summary of all of the department reductions at both the 5% amount and the 2.5%. So on one sheet, you have everything that the departments are presenting in some level of detail. In some cases, this continues to be work in progress. Some of the departments are actually still working on their 2.5% target amounts. As that information is updated, we will update councils.
Mr. Mayor, let me comment on this last table. You recall from last year, this is the sheet that we worked off of as you went through each of the departments, having heard from them. You went through each of the departments and came to a conclusion on which ones you were going to have the reduction stand and which ones you wanted to refund the reduction, essentially reduce the level of cuts. I kind of call this the Day of Reckoning Table. We're anticipating that tomorrow, likely afternoon, after you have heard from all the departments, assuming we get through everybody, this would be the final conversation where we come back and then go through each department. You recall you've had conversations or been expressions of interest, in some cases, a seeming consensus on areas that you'd want to look further, that you don't want to cut, that you want to reduce. We've assumed all of those at this point are expressions of interest until you get through all the departments, and then we sit down with this sheet and decide which reductions you would want to go back and refund, any areas you'd want to look further, and in some cases, there may actually be a vote then to express the council's decision on each of these, the same way we did a year ago. But we provided this to you now so you can see those departments, you've already done what was listed in their proposed reductions, and of course, you've got three of the largest departments still ahead of you.
And if I could, just for a moment, you've also been now, as required by the charter, been presented with the preliminary budget. A couple of notes on this. I have promised Michelle Flynn, who is our very detail-oriented, former internal auditor, now budget administrator, as she describes it, "I used to work on blueprints, now you want me to do watercolor," and with the level of detail. First, I want to, for her benefit, note, please don't try to reconcile the numbers in here on the numbers that are being presented. Not that they are deliberately wrong by any means, but to put the preliminary budget together had to be a snapshot of time, at a point in time where we were in the process. That's the preliminary budget. And of course, and this is the foundation for what council is viewing, but we are building off the preliminary budget. So that's the first thing that, by the way, she wanted to ensure that you don't try to reconcile the numbers you see against what's in the preliminary budget because they are changing. The second thing, and probably more important, in the section of the fund, the fund summary section, is the current proposal for the capital improvement program. And this we will be reviewing tomorrow in detail. We wanted to make sure the council had this today, and this is literally hot off the presses from finishing our own reconciliation and work. But if you were inclined this evening that you wanted to review the capital improvement program before tomorrow, you have the opportunity. There are the sections in here that tomorrow we'll be going through in some detail. I just wanted to point that out. And, Michelle, did I cover that okay?
Thumbs up.
Only one thumb up.
Only one. So today, we have, let's see, we'll actually, we'll need to see if Parks and Recreation is, we're going to be looping back to Parks and Recreation either today or tomorrow, and I need to look for George's, if the Rangers are in fact notified or...
We left the message this morning as well.
So we'll wait until later until we can, we want to bring Parks and Recreation back as there simply are some very significant points of discussion that we need to have, such as the change in the Ranger program that we really didn't have the opportunity to get into. So later on this morning or tomorrow morning, we'll do that. We have five departments we would like to do today, the Treasurer, the City Clerk, Glendale Water Power, the Fire, and the Police Department. Originally, Police was scheduled for tomorrow morning, but it actually would be very helpful if we can do Police today also so that we completely wind up the general fund presentations. We will take the direction that we received from council back tonight and then come back tomorrow, as Jim has indicated, with any direction, initial direction from that, and tomorrow we can really focus then on reconciling the entire general fund budget. So that's our plan. With that, I think we're ready for the City Treasurer's presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Ron Barucki, City Treasurer. Mayor Quintero, council members, pleased to be here to present the budget review for the City Treasurer's office. Yeah, but we don't want to have that problem. All right, let's take a look at an overview, the mission statement of the City Treasurer's office. "The City Treasurer, in his most important role as investment manager of city funds, strives to maximize yield without compromising safety and liquidity." We're a very small office, we're a very quiet office. We like to think of ourselves as being a very vital office. As such, we have and are organized into providing two core services, management of the investment portfolio, and that currently is at probably around $470 million, and management of the banking operations for the city. Besides the overall responsibility of making sure that there's always enough cash on hand at the bank to turn around and pay for payroll checks and pay for city bills, we manage the banking operations within the city. In that respect, we operate, the office operates very similarly to a bank branch, where we accept deposits from other departments, very similar to the community retailers, merchants bring in yesterday's receipts into the bank. We turn around and receive department receipts into the City Treasurer's office. Those deposits come in, are balanced, the cash is broken down, it's rebundled and made bank-ready for the armored carrier to come by, pick it up, and take it into our bank. This is an operation that goes on day in, every day, day in and day out. Let's take a look at a picture of this, the organization. Yeah? Go ahead, go ahead, click here. A picture is worth a thousand words. What you're looking at is a photo of not units within the City Treasurer's office, but these are the folk that are there. These little blocks are not groups, they're individuals. The City Treasurer focuses most of his time and attention on the city portfolio. The Assistant assists the City Treasurer with the portfolio and directly manages the operations and the administrative functions within the department. There are three staff people reporting to the Assistant, responsible for the deposit function, the banking preparation, and then the reconciliation of the bank accounts. Because of the cashiering operation, the minimum staffing level is set at three. The third individual, the deposit and banking function, it steps in when they are out of the office, either because of illness or because of meetings or when they're on vacation. So what we have, click. "The City Treasurer's office is organized and staffed for its two core mission functions, banking and investments. It is minimally staffed for both functions. In order for the City Treasurer's office to absorb budget cuts in multiples of 5%, reductions to staff would be required. For the last couple of years, that's been a conundrum." So I think what has happened, Audit and Finance have come up with an idea, an initiative, and Treasury is working closely with Audit and Finance with their initiative to realize operational efficiency citywide. If in fact the 5% is not possible within the Treasury Department, perhaps this Treasury Department can assist with something that it does on a citywide basis to foster efficiencies perhaps in another department. So what we have, one program being looked at right now, is to streamline the Treasury's receipt program. The Treasury's receipt program would be another word for the bank deposit. The departments that come into the Treasurer's office come in with a Treasury receipt, the Treasury receipt is multi-copied right now, copies are left at the depositing office, a copy of that receipt goes to Finance and one to Banking. What we would do, the Treasury staff would input data from department receipts directly into the PeopleSoft system instead of forwarding these receipts to Finance. So therefore, we can prevent or we can stop redundancies, and we can work with this system. We can take on additional duties because what we were able to do last year, well, I always thought that we had a very effective office, I was concerned about our efficiencies. And what we were able to do last year, which was confirmed when we asked for Audit to come in and to take a look at our operation, was actually close down our, shorten our counter hours. So we were able to actually maximize the work time without interruption from our staff people. So, looking at our total numbers, and again, this is the total for the office. Last year, the adopted budget was $563,000. Again, that's total. What we've submitted for this coming year is a reduction of 3.4%, is what that comes out to, that $19,000. I can tell you honestly, that's not because of planning. We had, the third staff member that we had left us last, in the fall of last year, we've been able to replace that individual at the lowest staff in that salary range, and the staff or the salary plus benefits accounts for the $14,000. So that was certainly not planned, but that's how we basically saved money on the salary and benefit side. The $4,700 is basically, if you recall last year, when we made a minimal reduction to our MNO, at that point in time, the City Treasurer was not thinking of being here for this report, and I didn't think it was fair to turn around and take out an additional $5,000 from the MNO. I would have preferred to leave that to my successor and let him or her make that decision as to whether or not they wanted to give up certain conferences that I saw that I could give up, but I wanted to leave that decision for, if a change were to be made, let someone else make that decision or give them the opportunity. Since I am here for another four years, I can live without the $4,700, and our total reduction from the prior year comes out to $19,000. And with that, that's my brief report.
Okay, do we have any questions, Mr. Najarian?
So what are the salary levels of the, you have four employees, Mr. Barucki? You've got an Assistant and three...
Correct.
What are the, what are the salary levels that they're receiving?
I don't know. To be very honest with you, I don't know.
And are they, are they part of the GMA or, you have that information?
Yes.
What salary levels are we offering the Assistant?
I don't have it offhand.
No, I don't have that detail of the, well, you can see what the total budget is, 80 odd percent is salary.
Right.
You might be able to tell by the titles, I'm not that familiar with, we've got them listed here as a Senior Accounting Services Specialist, that's... listed here, as a Senior Accounting Services Specialist, that's, yeah, it's GCA. They're all GCA.
The Assistant Treasurer would be GMA.
The Assistant would be in the GMA.
The others would be GCA.
And the reason I ask, because there doesn't seem to be a lot of other areas in the department to look at cost savings. You say you've only got four, and further reductions would have involved reducing staffing in the...
We probably need to be very clear, Ron, I think is being a little oblique. The reduction is noted from budget to budget, doesn't make up his 5%. That's, the 5% would be normally 5% of the $544,000 of budget going into this year. The view is, if the Treasurer's Office will implement this direct receipt handling process, our view is, we will more than make up in savings in Finance Department, the 5% the City Treasurer would be obligated for. So although you don't see a number here reducing his budget, implementing the direct receipt process that Mr. Elliott's recommended, and Ron is willing to take on, will produce the savings necessary. It won't be directly in his budget, but it will be in the Finance operation generally.
So is that something that we're being asked today to set as a policy decision, or is that something?
Well, that would be our recommendation, is a program that would need, that should be implemented, and as a result, prevent from having to make further cuts in staff in the Treasurer's Office that's only five people, and a one-body loss, five-body loss could have a huge impact.
So the savings would be how much? Do we have an actual projection on that?
Just a little by-way background, this was developed by way of an internal audit, streamlining cash receipts, and the effect will be citywide, certainly in our department, but within all departments, because it's eliminating an entire step of duplication in putting the receipts directly into the system. So the effects of the Treasurer's Office taking a little bit more on, in terms of workflow, will benefit most of departments. And it's already, we've already been having training classes, so it's in the process of being completely implemented.
Is there any overtime in your department?
No. No overtime. No RLEs.
Any...
No projects.
Any...
No programs.
Take-home vehicles?
No take-home vehicles.
Any take-home calculators?
No promo items. No T-shirts, no City Treasurer caps. I don't do outreach programs. I don't. We just do...
Are there any...
Let me double-check that slide. We do core services.
Are there any...
Banking and investments.
Are there any significant software subscriptions that are duplicative in investment programs, investment subscriptions, consultation, consultants, or anything like that?
No.
They're not duplicative. You do use it, but not duplicative.
Yes, yes. Primarily, the big expense item within our budget is the Bloomberg Reporting System, Financial Reporting System. And secondarily, the report that we use is Simpro, which is the report that we use to actually generate the monthly reports, and the quarterly's, and the annual. So, with a portfolio of $470 million, there is no duplication. The Bloomberg is necessary. I don't know how, that's an expensive item, by the way. $20,000 a year is what that costs. We like to believe that this is the same system that the broker world uses, and if we have access to their inventory, and they can communicate to us immediately in real-time email, that savings of just one basis point translates to $45,000, $46,000 right there.
How about commissions? When we buy these bonds and these corporate notes, do we pay commissions, and from what budget do they come from?
No.
And are there any savings that we can obtain by, I mean, commissions, everything from real estate to, you know, any other sort of sales that are based on commissions, are being renegotiated, you know, throughout this economy? Are there any savings we can find, because we do have quite a large, you know, we've seen your quarterly report for many quarters, any savings we can obtain from renegotiating those commissions and obtaining a better rate that might end up in a lot more money savings for the city?
We pay no fees, we pay no commissions for the transactions that we purchase.
There's no commissions at all?
No.
We buy Toyota Motor Credit, there's no commission that goes out?
That's correct. Everything is priced on a, in a trade. In other words, we can buy from broker one, two, or three, A, B, or C, it doesn't really matter. The securities that they're selling us are, already include the salesperson's commission. The haircut is there.
And they compete?
So whether we, it's the same price. On new issues, it's always the same price.
The same price.
Uh-huh. On the secondary market, what you have, though, you could have different pricing, but usually, you're finding something that is exclusive to a broker, or to a house, to an investment brokerage. So they've got the last few pieces of this, and so you either buy from them, or you just don't buy it. But as far as paying out commissions, or negotiating fees, or ranges on total volume, and getting a discount on this, or price point, that, it's not a concern, and I don't budget for that. That's why we're so efficient.
Any other questions?
Just to comment, I'm glad that this time around, we're not looking at, last time around, Mr. Barokey, we were looking at how many reams of paper and paper clips in your office, if you recall.
Oh.
And I'm glad we're not.
I'm glad I got through the word "conundrum."
Well...
I didn't realize I was being oblique in some of my comments.
As long as you're not, as long as you're not being obtuse, we're okay. In any case... And don't ever get acute with us. But in any case, I am, Mr. Mayor, I am, I know we're not being asked at this very moment, but I am perfectly happy with that suggestion. It has been worked out between Mr. Elliott and Mr. Barokey. I, as I mentioned the other day, this is a lean department, just as some of our departments are. There just isn't a lot there. As was just pointed out, I think, with sort of exhaustive probing by my colleague, there just isn't a lot there to, unless you're getting down to how many reams of paper, and how many paper clips, and how many rubber thumbs, and, so I'm prepared to support that.
Any other questions? Mr. Starbuck?
Mr. Mayor, just as a point of information, noting that as a percentage of our portfolio, the Treasurer's operation takes about 10 basis points, which is 1/10 of 1% to manage the city's portfolio. We recently, we have bonds that we've issued, and there are usually fiscal agents who manage those bonds for you. An example are certificates of participation for the police building, a $47 million bond issue, a $57 million bond issue. We've been paying about 25 basis points in the past, or a quarter of 1% annually, for the fiscal agent to manage those bonds. They've recently told us that they're going to increase that to 150 basis points, 1.5%. And of course, we're going to be looking for other means to manage those bonds now, as a result, but put in that context, to manage a half-a-billion-dollar portfolio with a cost of about 10 basis points, is a pretty good bargain.
And how are they justifying that increase in what essentially is their fee? What exactly are they doing different, or what?
It's just the marketplace driving. JP Morgan is the one that handles that for us. We have been searching, most banks or financial institutions are not interested in the business, or restricted from doing it, for whatever reason. We've even been calling South American banks, I mean, we've tried to, we've got a long, long list of potential providers. We've talked with our bond counsel, they advise us to probably stick with the current provider, because it's otherwise deemed as a new debt issuance, and some other quotes we've gotten, as much as $100,000 upfront fees, plus a fee that's almost as high. So we're searching.
I can see, in general, California bonds, or any municipality across the country, I can see that they have to do a little more research, perhaps, we just read the article about the Alameda Corridor bonds, et cetera. When it comes to Glendale's bonds, you know, it doesn't seem like they're going to have to do a whole heck of a lot.
I think the answer to the justification is because they can.
We're still a good credit risk.
Seriously, they can. We're in a market where this bank knows that there aren't a lot of their kind out there who will do this work. As a result, it's kind of what the market will bear. Now, the offset to that is, these bonds continue to pay an extremely low rate. The last one was 0.15%, 15 hundredths of 1%, which means that somebody's willing to park their money in our bonds for a week, and essentially not get anything for it. But this was a disappointing news. But I only use that to put in the context here, the Treasurer's Office has about 10 basis points to manage the city's portfolio and manage it very well.
Mr. Barokey, perhaps you can go into that business, maybe we can take something.
Maybe in four years.
By our own minds.
JP Morgan.
Okay, thank you very much. Next.
The city clerk will make his presentation.
Well, here's where we close the budget gap.
The department has got a lot of facts.
Here's where we close the budget gap.
Speaking of lean departments, although not reflected in the department head, I've been told self-deprecating humor is always a good way to start these things.
And how much are you spending on entertainment?
Find out, won't we?
What's your entertainment budget?
Tell us when you get to the humor part, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity to present to you. We'll start off with just our basic mission statement. Now, the City Clerk's Office's mission is to maintain records and provide accurate information, to provide superior professional and friendly services to the public, and to our internal customers, to conduct elections in a nonpartisan and impartial manner, and to issue licenses and permits to ensure fair code compliance. As a custodian of the public record and the city's elections official, we provide a service to the public that's essential, but most importantly, we keep the city in compliance with local, state, and federal laws, including the fair political practices, commissions, regulations, California Public Records Act, Voting Rights Act, et cetera. Now, our core services, we'll just go over this very quickly, but City Clerk's Office is a service department within the city, upon which the city council, city departments, and general public rely for information regarding the operations and legislative history of the city. The department serves as a liaison between the public and the city council, and provides related municipal services. I often think of our department as the switchboard to City Hall. When most people have questions regarding the city, the first place they usually stop by is the City Clerk's Office. Sections and Responsibility, if you are not familiar with it, it's administration, license, and permits, records, and public information, commission support, elections. We've taken on a number of additional duties over the years, including the licenses and permits processing, and most recently, we also are working with Neighborhood Services, and issuing the tobacco retail licenses, permits for the retailers. This is an organizational chart. You see that we have the City Clerk, elected by the electorate. We have the Secretary to the City Clerk, which serves as a secretary also to the council, or on council services. We have the Office Services Secretary, which is, deals with the Housing Authority, Redevelopment Agency, and all boards and commissions. Beneath the City Clerk, we have the Assistant City Clerk, who's responsible for oversight in the absence of the City Clerk, outer office operations, acts as the department's budget liaison too, and it's in the hands of a very capable Rita Buchanan, who many of you are very familiar with, mostly because you know that if you're late in filing any of your forms, you will receive a prompt telephone call from Rita, telling you what's what, and that you have to file your paperwork ASAP. We also have the Office Operations Supervisor, two licensed investigators, Office Service Specialist II, two of them, and Senior Office Services Specialist. Just to give you an idea of what those positions do, because the human resources or personnel titles do not do justice to the specific responsibilities assigned to them, our Senior Office Services Specialist is responsible for processing special events permits, the transient occupancy tax, the BID, Business Improvement District Assessments, that's for Adams Square, as well as Montreux Shopping Park Association, petty cash reconciliation, ordering of general office supplies. Office Service Specialist II is responsible for the processing of filming and other permits, reconciling the receipts within the city offices, and performing various election, essential election duties. Office Service Specialist II is responsible for maintaining Glendale Municipal Code, records management, public notice postings, conducted bid openings, and legal advertising. We've had a number of accomplishments, but we won't rest on our laurels during this presentation. I will say that we were, the one thing I will say is that we've always had a lean operation in the City Clerk's Office. When I first started, we had two hourlies who were, their main responsibility was as dog canvassers, to canvass the city, to ensure that people who owned animals were complying with the law, to make sure that they were licensed. And those positions were eliminated early on. Our staff has not increased, in fact, we've lost the customer service representative, or we offered it up as part of our reduction in the last cycle. Now, action taken to balance the fiscal year '08-'09 budget, required to reduce budget by $54,000, $51,000, that is elimination of the CSR position that our audience at home, and that you see right there, $58,000 reduction. Now, we have, we have here the overall budget. The main thing that we can offer up in this cycle is the $15,000 savings. Note that, the adopted 2008-'09 budget does not include the elections budget, I should point that out. We are waiting, that cost increases yearly, postage just went up another penny the other day, it's now 44 cents. We recoup about half the costs of running the elections from the school board and the college board, approximately $160,000 of that overall cost, which is just over $300,000, will come back to us. And we have offered in our management, our maintenance and operations, approximately $11,870. Now, service level changes for '09, '10, 5% reduction of $54,000, and additional 2.5 reduction, $27,000, totaling $81,077. The only way to really achieve this in the City Clerk's Office, unfortunately, would be the elimination of a full-time position, and additional maintenance and operations reductions. Because of the preliminary salaries and benefits in MNO budget, this is all that we can offer at this time, although, you know, to plagiarize the word "conundrum," from our City Treasurer, we find ourselves in the same position. We are currently stretched to the limit as it is, although I do not want to sound as the only department head that is struggling, I know all the departments are, but we are an internal service department, and very little revenue is recognized. Now, the challenges we have is keeping spending at a minimum while customer demands increase, and demands for services in our department increase, maintaining the current level of service to the community and our internal customers, other departments, forecasting for the future budget, given the uncertainty of these current economic times, and we must continue to cross-train our current staff. If we do go ahead with the reductions, we'll have additional responsibilities for the current staff, which in wording seems simple, but is a lot more difficult to realize, given the specialization of most of our staff that has been in the City Clerk's Office for some time. We'll have less funding for training, we've already foregone that. We do not, our staff does not go to conferences. This is unfortunate also, because in order to maintain certification as a certified municipal clerk, which I will become in a few months officially, we need to go to conferences, we are mandated by the City Clerk's Association, or Guild, if you prefer. And we have also possible furloughs for existing full-time staff. Again, I want to reiterate that we have always had a lean operation. In the last cycle, we looked at ways that we could cut down on waste. We leased a new copier, which reduced the amount of maintenance that was done to the copier that we had, Big Bertha, we affectionately refer to it. It broke It broke down quite often. We got a new copier, which has brought down the monthly lease rate, also cuts down the number of repairs done to it. It also is a networked scanner, so that has eliminated the reliance on graphics that we had for some of the larger council packets. And also, we've looked at other ways where we can minimize paper in the city. We just, most recently, applied for a stimulus package grant to help us realize the paperless agenda management process. Currently, when the agenda packets or reports are prepared, printed out on paper, circulated throughout the city, we applied for a grant to see if we could possibly receive some funds from the federal government to go paperless in the city. So, that is nuts and bolts of it, and I'll be happy to take your questions now.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Kasakian.
Really? Okay, so, thank you.
So, did we, wait, wait, let me, you went--
All right, I knew it, okay.
Haven't you ever seen Columbo? Is it Columbo?
No, well, we don't want to just, we want to answer any questions that you may have, please. Councilmember Najjaran.
I was, I was often running behind in your presentation and then having to catch up. So, how, in this next budget cycle, what are you--
It's our, it's our maintenance and operations budget reduction, literally. For lack of a better term, it's office supplies. Office supplies, trainings, wherever we can take a little bit from.
And training, your training budget comes out of there also? The mentioning of furloughs is something for the future, then? You're not going to, you're not thinking of doing that now?
In fact, you know, there's, there's a lot of things related to the core mission of the City Clerk's Office that we're right, right now, we just don't have the funds to do it. One of the key things is having a records manager. We need a records czar, if you will, in the city, because we have a records retention policy that we haven't officially implemented for lack of a records manager in the city, which other cities do have. You know, the other option is to train one of our staff members to be able to do that, but again, that will require money, additional funds, and adds tremendous responsibility on the shoulders of existing staff. You know, we've tried to do the best and provide the best service that we can with what we currently have in the department. We're not, again, trying to jerk away from our responsibility of offering up whatever we can. We believe that we are, you know, part of a team. There's definitely no I in team, but this is what we can offer unless the council has other suggestions.
With regard to the elections--
Yes, sir.
I know several, perhaps two years ago, when we talked about some of the changes we had done, we had placed an additional challenge on your department to get out and, basically outreach to the community. And I saw the Glendale Elections website that you put on. I think it was very, very comprehensive, very easy to maneuver. How do you feel about that? Is there sufficient budget to implement? In other words, are all your ideas being implemented, or are you being constrained by budget issues? What, tell us a little bit about that.
We, we moved forward cautiously in the last election. I don't think that there was anything that we wanted necessarily do that we were restricted in, because we knew that the council had given us more or less carte blanche to do, quote unquote, whatever it takes to make sure that we took care of any problems or issues. In regards to Glendale Votes, glendalevotes.org, which is our, which will be our permanent Glendale City Elections website and archival website, we're looking to migrate all of our past elections information and records all onto this website. It will be a one-stop resource for historic purposes and for the future. That, you know, was information services that completed that, you know, it was not done with any additional resources exerted from our staff, other than our input and direction and design advice. As far as public service announcements, we'd like to continue doing public service announcements, particularly as more of the campaigns have migrated to the cable television networks and you have more talking heads. We found in this last election cycle that no matter what our best efforts, there was a lot of misinformation that was spread throughout the community in regards to what the process is, how people can vote, when they can vote, and anything that we could do possibly in the form of advertisement to counteract that in the next election cycle, that would be beneficial. But again, those costs were not that much in this last election cycle for the entire production and advertisement of the campaign or election, public service announcements that detailed how people could request a vote-by-mail application and then what to do with the ballot once they had received it, the entire cost of production and the advertising, which included seven public service announcements, was less than $12,000. That's much less, by the way, than the cost of actually sending out mailers to people's homes, which is not something we're adverse to as well. We look into that. There are other cities in California that send out voter guides as to how to read campaign material, how to identify who's sending it, et cetera, as part of a citywide ethics program. And I believe it was Santa Clarita that may have done it, and even won a Pottin Award.
One of the concerns I had two years ago, when we talked about changing our absentee ballot application process, was that should, should someone who has difficulty with English fill out an improper absentee ballot application request, it might go unnoticed in the clerk's office, or you might not have the staff to call Mr. Fill in the Blank, this signature doesn't match the signature on file, or you signed where it should be the date, you dated where it should be the sign, and you--
Responding to troubleshooting and responding to people who have issues.
Were you able to cover that with the, with the current budget?
You know, we believe so, but it really depends on who you ask. We think, we made about, about 20 house calls this year. We called people, followed up with them. When we saw that there was a discrepancy, we tried to contact the voter. I, myself, even at one point, went to a couple of senior homes, to individuals who were in bed, they could not leave their rooms, and helped them cast their ballot or request a absentee ballot. So, we were able to. We, you know, we could always use a couple more bilingual speakers in the office, particularly in light of what the perceptions were, I don't want to say the realities, but the perceptions were from certain members of the public in the last election. This time, we hired a minimum three additional bilingual staffers for the election cycle.
Mr. Starburn.
Mr. Mayor, just so you understand what the presentation reflects, it's noted that there was a customer service representative position eliminated. That was going into this budget year.
Yes.
The additional 5 percent departments are presenting are on top of the cuts that we're taking going into this year.
Yes, I hope, yeah, I apologize if that wasn't clear. That was in the last election cycle, and all of the offers is $15,000.
So, my candid observation is, I think there's more work to be done in the City Clerk's budget. Departments are offering up to you reductions that they don't want to make, but if they have to make, this would be their priorities. And none of these cuts or any reductions that departments frankly want to have to make. The City Clerk's budget proposes $15,500. The 5 percent cut and the 2.5 percent cut that frankly I think you should see the implications of would be about $81,000. So, I frankly think there's more work that needs to be done here. I think you need to be, even though it may not be what Artie would recommend, and the end of the day, it may not be what you want to do, I think you need to see what it would take for the City Clerk if he was going to reduce $81,000 out of his budget. That would probably be a position, a position and a half possibly, which will impact operations, but I think you need to see the implications of that, and then you can decide to, to not take it or to take it as you deem appropriate. But at this point, all you're getting to see is really $15,500 and not the implications of it being additional $55,000, $56,000 in cuts. No offense to Artie, I think, I think his department is critical and they work very hard, but I think being consistent with what other departments are bringing to you, you at least need to see the picture of that.
And I understand, Mr. Starbird, I concur. It's just difficult for me in my position, given that these positions are specifically related to, you know, compliance with laws and specific sections of both, you know, California state law, federal law, to really figure out, okay, which of these would we offer up to you? That's why we suggest, you know, we'll, we'll work with, your department will work with finance in trying to come up, but as far as, you know, what the impact would be, it's very difficult for us to pick.
And I might add, I guess I'd take off of the, the table, the issue of the election. Running the election is something that has to be outside of budget reductions, frankly. It's, in my view, is the most important thing that we do every two years is for the City Clerk, and I say "we" because we support the City Clerk as much as we can in that, so it's, it's all of our objectives to run a, an election that is above-board, credible, and accurate. So, that is kind of off of the budget table. As we've noted many times, we will apply the resources necessary to make sure we achieve the goal on elections. But as it relates to the day-to-day operation of the Clerk's Office, I just think you need to see the City Clerk's views on the implications of achieving a full 5 percent and achieving a full 2.5 percent. And then you get, you get to decide whether you want to implement it as we go through what I'm calling the Day of Reckoning List, and actually deciding how we're going to plug this budget gap.
Ms. Friedman, followed by Mr. Weaver.
You've been increasing film permitting and filming, which is great. How much staff time is that taking?
Well, we have one staff person wholly dedicated to filming practically. I mean, she does other duties as well in the office, but last year, we issued about approximately 110 permits, continues to increase every year, although incrementally, we haven't seen a tremendous jump. We saw certain spikes in filming on the doorstep of the strikes that occurred here at the studios. It does take a considerable amount of time.
Okay.
And it's not something that was specifically under the City Clerk's purview, and there have been discussions, and I see Assistant City Manager Bob McFaul with his hand raised, waiting to be, to jump in, but it's something that's in discussion. We have expressed our willingness to cooperate with any department to streamline this process, to increase filming, and we definitely have our opinions as to the direction it should go, but we're fully cooperative with what the city manager and the council decide on this.
So, if we were to move that duty over to redevelopment, that would be potentially a position that we could eliminate?
Potentially, but, you know, I would say this, that the individual who does it right now has tremendous institutional memory, has worked with the studios, has worked with location scouts. It would really depend how it moved. We were one of the departments, I was actually one of the first people to suggest that, as far as increasing filming here in Glendale, that the operations for promoting Glendale as a filming location, as a destination, because we are within the 30-mile zone of the studios, be transferred to the redevelopment, Development Services. But the processing of the permit, actually, having someone jockey it around from department to department, it should not necessarily be the responsibility of the person who is going to the studios, going to meet with the Teamsters, who are, you know, the location scouts or the AFI Institute, and promoting Glendale as a location.
If they were to do that, that would reduce the burden, then, on the person who's doing it now in your department?
Potentially. I see it as the person working under whoever it is that's promoting it, personally.
Well, I will say that I think there's been a really big difference in the amount of production going on in the city, so I do commend you and your department for the work you've done.
Thank you. We have to also note that as we look at ways to increase revenue from filming, it would only be by volume, not necessarily by raising the permit fees, although we can raise them a little. City of Los Angeles now is, in order to keep one of our homegrown industries here in the Southland, is basically charging nothing for filming in the City of Los Angeles, because it is such an essential driving force of our local economy. These are people that live in Glendale, work in Glendale, and just work across the border in Burbank, or in Studio City, or wherever else it may be. Given the threat to our economy from runaway production, particularly now, is something that I was committed to when we came in, and we're trying to reverse the reputation that Glendale has had in the past as to, quote unquote, being unfriendly to filming. I don't think that's the case anymore.
Before you answer your question, Mr. Weaver, Mr. McFaul, do you have a comment on the film?
Only just indicate that shortly, really, Councilmember Friedman made the observations, and we've been working with Development Services, Phil and Ken, who are putting together a report that would actually take Glendale to be more similar to the California Film Commission model. Actually, Councilmember Drayman, a number of months ago, made this observation and challenged us to come back with a proposal similar to what Santa Clarita did. And in the Santa Clarita model, they literally took their revenue, that was about a quarter of a million dollars a year, not all that different from what Glendale is doing, and adopting the California Film Commission model, which is actually hiring an advocate, somebody who works directly with the studios. The process side still has to happen. It is really getting the volume up, and in a very short period of time, they took their revenue from a quarter million dollars to a million dollars, and actually probably did it without impacting the community, because simply the film manager worked with the community better than what we're able to do right, right now. And then not long ago, actually had such a volume, they had to hire a second individual. I don't know the financial outcome from that, but there's a lot of capacity that we can do, and we want to bring that back to council, and Development Services is just wrapping up that, that report, so.
And I just want to add that I think that it's important that we do promote filming in Glendale. Just to elaborate or to expand on the point, as far as a particular staff person associated with that, does take up a lion's share of her time right now, but she also does elections work. She's, during elections time, we pull her completely off of filming, and she works on that in addition to being a backfill for the front-counter receptionist, customer service rep, if you will, position that we had before. We are a pretty public interaction-heavy office. Anytime anyone has come into our office, and I know all of you at one point or another have, you will see people at our counter with questions, wanting to take out permits, applying or filling out forms for licenses, whatever the case may be. So, that individual also does a tremendous amount of interaction with the day-to-day public that comes to our office.
Mr. Weaver.
I know we're trying to cut millions, so what I'm asking is peanuts, but if I go down to City Clerk's Office and I want to copy something out of my file, I pay 10 cents a sheet, get a receipt. I've been down there when I know people have made public records requests, and I've said, what are those stacks over there sitting a couple feet high across shelves? Those are public records requests, and we're waiting for them to be picked up. Individuals come in, they look at one sheet, put it back, and walk out the door. Who's paid for all, because I pay 10 cents a sheet, who paid for all that when the individual didn't take what they ordered?
You know, that, I see our city attorney turning on his mic, and I actually wanted to defer to him. You know, you bring up, but you do bring up a very good point, and the reality of it is, we absorb that time at times. We have had instances, for instance, with the police department, where we had an individual who made a public records request, that the records did not necessarily exist, we had to compile the records, and the staff time associated with that, we attempted to charge an individual for it, and they did not want to pay. This was, again, information that we had to pull together, and I say "we," the city, and we weren't able to recoup our staff time loss on that.
But the paper, I mean, you're absorbing that cost in the City Clerk's Office, right?
Yeah. A lot of times, it is the duplication, we will absorb the cost, we have different accounts we'll charge it to, depending on the department, but at the end, we absorb more than we recoup.
Mr. Howard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, with regard to public records requests, the State Court of Appeals in the case called North County Parents Association determined that you can only charge the direct cost of duplication, which means you cannot charge staff time. Generally, in searching for the records, what you can charge is the, essentially, the cost of the proportionate share of the cost of the paper, the person standing at the machine while the machine is copying, so it's a very limited amount that we can charge. What we might want to look into, and it's something I can check with Mr. Elliott, is a possible SB 90 claim for the state, because that's a state-mandated provision under the Public Records Act, that we can only charge the exact cost of duplication. There's some, there are some exceptions to that, where we have to actually generate a program, in which case we can actually charge the person for the time necessary to generate a program, which in turn generates the record, but if we're just looking or hand-searching for paper documents, it's the exact cost of duplication.
And this is where also a records manager would come in, very useful for a city as far as an investment, perhaps not now in the immediate future, but, you know, looking a little further, just beyond that. Because, you know, you are having more, increasing issues arise with public records, be it metadata in electronic forms and records that are created in the city, or emails, or even the ability to charge someone for compiling of electronic email, PDF files, et cetera. We do need to start looking into how we're going to do this, and our goal is to have most of our records, if not all our records in the city, be eventually electronic. The question arises, though, when we give that out, you know, how it can be manipulated to protect the interests of the city, and for that, we need a professional.
So, in the scenario that Mr. Weaver described-- So in the scenario that Mr. Weaver described, where someone print up hundreds of pages and somebody takes three, do they get charged for all of those hundreds of pages?
Sometimes they -- well, sometimes they don't have those printed up. What will happen is, we'll have the originals of the documents. They have to be brought over for inspection, and then the person can look at, because some records, we're not allowed to make duplicates of. So it really depends. I mean, it depends from request to request what the exact nature of it is.
You only charge for what they take?
Yes. We do only charge for what they take.
Mr. Drayman.
Leaving the realm of documents sitting on a shelf and coming back to filming for just a second, I just wanted to compliment you already on the work related to filming in the city. I can remember when you were not our city clerk, and the issues dealing with filming, and most of them, at least the end of it that I've dealt with for some years in the city, has settled down tremendously, mostly due to your personal involvement with the process. I also wanted to say that when you mentioned the staff person in your office who works and has sort of the institutional memory when it comes to various production companies, scouts, and so on, location managers, and so forth, it's not just that. It's also her understanding of the nuances of various neighborhoods, business districts, their needs and requirements, and that's where the troubles, if you will, with the community vis-à-vis filming come to play. And that's where a lot of that's been laid to rest. It's been solved, in essence. So that's the other part of it. So I would really stress the difference, for anybody that got out of this, the notion that hiring somebody or working with someone to promote the city in terms of filming, to increase revenues that way, that that job would somehow also take over the role that a staff member who has that memory, has that touch, that understanding, it would not take that role, that permitting part of it, the process part of it. They're completely different.
And I know, council member, you're very familiar with filming in other cities as well. I think Pasadena has actually three staff people dedicated just to their filming operation, and one person does exactly that, the promotion of it, and the other people are the permit actual -- actual permit people. I apologize for cutting you off.
No, no, but I just wanted to point that out, because it -- they are completely different. And in some ways, I'm -- I have been, as the person at one time, that bear a lot of the brunt of that impact on the community, and very happy that it's in your department, rather than in some other department. Because redevelopment, Development Services, is not always the department that is most closely attached or affiliated with neighborhoods and business associations and so on, although they have some contact. So in any case, I'll be very anxious when that comes back, that we can all get a chance to look at the model that's being brought back and...
There are many other ideas that we have in the city clerk's department to make our operations leaner, more efficient, more cost-effective to the public. Unfortunately, they're all works in progress. They weren't things that we could readily come up to and say, "Here it is, in hard figures, this is what we're offering up." In the next year, there'll be more that we'll be able to offer up, you know, trim from here, look at how we handle our dog licenses, whether it's more cost-effective to outsource that to a private entity, to see if the processing of it would save us some cost and time with staff in the city. Unfortunately, at this time, this is what we could offer to you. And we understand that it's not the most that we could offer, but again, we lay ourselves at your feet to the mercy of the council to finance in the city manager's office.
Interesting position. Mr. James.
I think the news for the city budget is going to get worse, because these propositions didn't pass. And Schwarzenegger said he's going to take $2 billion away from city governments. Both in Mr. Baruchy's presentation and yours already, you got to a certain stage where you said, "This is our conundrum. We can't do any more cutting unless we start laying off," or eliminating positions, or -- I mean, let's speak frankly here. This is a very challenging moment for all of us, and not a very pleasant one. And I've stated that I'm opposed to laying off. I'm in favor of the furloughs, and I think that was one of your items. And I would like to hear back from staff what a furlough model looks like. How is it actually implemented? Is it a vote amongst the department employees that they would prefer a furlough? Are there certain employees that can step to the front and say, "Well, I can furlough more than others voluntarily"? We're sort of talking about the furlough, and I need to get an understanding as to what the best practices model is for furloughs. Other cities are doing it as we speak, across the county, across the state and nation. So let's get an understanding about what that means, how the impacts are spread out, distributed, and obviously, the impact to each and every department is going to be a specified discussion and analysis. But the general idea of the furlough, the voluntary furlough, what does that mean? How's it implemented? And how is it going to affect us? So that's not for your department individually, but this is for all the other departments. I may have a few more other department heads who say, "Well, I'm at a conundrum now. I can't cut anymore unless I'm reducing my staff." So let's be ready to talk about the tough decisions that may be facing us.
Well, an example of one of the things that we're looking to also, you know, I kind of glossed over it, but for instance, we do a dog vaccination clinic. We also vaccinate, you know, cats, and we do that once a year, two different locations in the city, very successful. A lot of the public comes to have their animals vaccinated at a reduced cost. Why do we do this? It's because we're required by California law, actually. There's a section in California code that says, you know, apparently enacted when rabies was rampant throughout California, and it was cities were obligated to do this. We've now looked into this with the State Veterinary Association to see if it's something that we're still required to do, or whether Petco, just across the street, who does a vaccination clinic every month, would possibly be willing to cooperate with the city in taking that burden off of the city clerk's office. Those are the types of things that we're looking at currently.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Kasakian.
Thank you.
Next.
Our next presentation...
Before we go there, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. That sort of leaves dangling out there whether you want to see a full 5% or 7.5% from the city clerk. My recommendation is, I think you should at least see what that would entail, so that when you go through the list of reductions, you can decide whether you want those or whether you want to leave them funded.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. Or whether we want to talk about furloughs.
Well, you'll have that opportunity across the board in the city. You'll have a lot of other options. We will likely bring back some things that were discussed back at the beginning of this fiscal year and back in October, when we first anticipated the downturn, that you may want to put back on the table again. For example, the whole issue of Friday closures. You know, there's no reason why that shouldn't also be back in the picture. Doesn't mean you have to accept it or go there, but when we're talking about reductions of $10,000, $15,000, $20,000, we're kind of down to that level, then the opportunity to consider something that would have been, I think the estimate was $80,000 per Friday, and furloughs, and all of those things should be on this "day of reckoning" list that you're able to choose among. But for the city clerk's benefit, if indeed you're going to have a picture of what a 5% and 7.5% is, he'll need to do some more work in order to get some numbers in the list.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, on that "day of reckoning" list, I hope that we'll also have this. This is not related to the city clerk's department, but if we're talking about furloughs, and we're talking about, well, things of that nature, I would also like to know what -- have right along with it, what that literally means in terms of operations and services. Because it's easy to say, "We're going to furlough people," and the responsible -- you know, those responsibilities that would be taken on this day or that day will be done by others, or we're going to work harder. I just want to make sure that when we start thinning, and we say, "Well, we're going to retain this manager or a person of manager or up," and they're just going to make sure that the -- I mean, are our managers and up really going to go out and do spray for leaf mold? You know, are they really going to go out and lay down pesticides? So I want something realistic as to what that might mean in our doomsday scenario, should it come to that.
We'll do that. Okay, next.
Our next department would be Glendale Water and Power.
Good morning, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council. I'm Glenn Steiger, General Manager, Glendale Water and Power. I am pleased to present the Glendale Water and Power 2009-10 budget. This budget is completely consistent and was developed around the Glendale Water and Power five-year strategic plan, which was presented to you in March. I've also provided a copy, a summary copy, of the plan for your reference as we go through this. I'm not going to go through the strategic plan, but I'd like to just mention that it is consistent. I'd also like to mention the fact that Glendale Water and Power is the only department within the city of Glendale that is a full enterprise. We are not dependent upon general funds. However, we are very focused on providing the proper level of the two essential services that we provide, water and power, at the lowest and most reasonable rates that we possibly can, and that's what drives us. So our mission statement is to deliver reliable, high-quality, environmentally sensitive, and sustainable water and power services to our customers in a caring and cost-competitive manner, while creating a stimulating and rewarding work experience for our employees. Our services are fairly direct. They're essential services of electricity, potable, and recycled water to 84,000 electric and 33,000 water customers. That translates to about 88,000 meters for electric and about 35,000 meters for water. The makeup of the department is fairly straightforward. I'm the general manager. We have, at the moment, we have four assistant general managers. We expect to have a fifth in place early in the fiscal '09-10 year. Those assistant general managers are responsible for the various sections. Our assistant general manager of electric services, Ramona Buegg, is responsible for the reliability of the electric system within Glendale, and that specifically relates to our wires, poles, underground distribution system, substations, vaults, and pretty much everything associated with the distribution of electric service, along with the maintaining of the reliability within the city. Our assistant general manager of water services, Peter Kavonis, likewise is responsible for the water system and everything associated with water, from supply of water, which we'll talk a little bit about, to the distribution, to the maintenance of water quality. Our assistant general manager of supply is Steve Lins. He is responsible for all of our power supply, which includes the operation of our Grayson Power Plant. It also includes both our wholesale and retail level of sales and hedging. And it also finally includes our initiatives on the legislative and regulatory side of our business, which continue to grow at an extraordinary rate. Our assistant manager, general manager of customer and support services, Ned Basson, is responsible for all of our customer service, including metering, billing, customer accounting, our public benefits section, and all of the other support that GWP requires to run the business on a daily basis. Finally, we show an assistant general manager of utility, financial planning, and risk management. That position exists but is not yet filled, and as I mentioned a minute ago, we expect to fill it within the fiscal year. That is a critical position for GWP, particularly given the amount of funds that we deal with on a yearly and daily basis, and given the amount of risk that we deal with clearly on a daily basis and many times on an hourly basis. Our initiatives for the coming year include the smart grid. The smart grid will change dramatically and will be the biggest single change that our business has seen probably in the last 75, 80 years, on both the water and electric side. It's known by many different names, AMI being one of them, but essentially, it starts out as automated meter reading, and ultimately becomes a completely new way of doing business, not only for GWP but for our customers. We will start that this year. We will start by automating all of our water meters and quickly move into the automation of all of our electric meters. That will create a basis for many other applications, both from an operational standpoint and from a customer interaction standpoint. So that is our largest single initiative, which starts this year and continues on for the next five to seven years. AB 32 compliance. What that means in layman's terms is the mitigation of greenhouse gas and how we get there. And we get there in a number of different ways. I won't go into all the details of it, but it includes not only what the major discussion that we hear today on cap and trade of carbon emissions credits, but more importantly, it includes our initiatives into renewable energy, into energy efficiency, and smart grid. And we very much believe that our initiatives that we've already started and we will continue to do throughout the year in those areas will get us to where we need to be well before the regulatory requirements that are currently in place require us to do that. But AB 32 compliance at this point would have us reduce all of our carbon emission to 1990 levels by the year 2020. We will complete the Chevy Chase Reservoir Project this year, and of course, we'll have to pay for it, so you'll see some of the numbers associated with that. It's been a very, very successful project, and it will be completed ahead of schedule. We've discussed at length the need to reduce and/or stabilize our electric rates. We have a number of initiatives in place right now. We recognize the criticality in that area, and in fact, we brought one issue to you last night, and that is the need to renegotiate in one form or another our landfill gas contract. We have another similar contract that needs to be renegotiated, and a number of other areas that we're working on to reduce and stabilize electric rates. A focus on theft of service. Now, that's a very broad topic, but we've recognized more recently, within the last year, that clearly, given the amount of electric losses primarily that we've seen in our system, that it goes far beyond the norm that we normally would expect in operating an electric system. That tells us that there's a significant theft of service issue here in Glendale, and that is not unusual. That is pretty much the case no matter where you go. The difference is, we have not focused on it in the past. We are focusing on it now. We've already uncovered a number of theft of services just within the last month or two. We expect to increase that, and that will hopefully help to reduce rates. It will help to stabilize our system. And again, coupled with smart grid, as we get into smart grid, that will help us identify theft of service in a much more effective manner. As I mentioned earlier, we are creating a rate, risk management, and finance function. We already have a finance function, but we are leveling -- we are raising the level and increasing the functionality there to include a full-time rate design, which is very much needed in both our electric and water sections, and an area to overlook on a daily basis our risk management. And when we deal with the kinds of numbers that we'll show you in a minute on purchased power and fuel, it's critical that the risk management function be a part of the GWP normal operation. We will be looking to install new wells in the coming year. In fact, we have a test well right now that looks very, very promising. So that's one of our initiatives for this year. And then we will, within this fiscal year, decide on our new generation technology that will hopefully upgrade and/or replace some of the existing Grayson Power Plant. So that's, again, a large initiative for us, but that will occur this year. When we take a look at what we've done at GWP to reduce our costs, to levelize our rates, and so on, this is the second year that we are proposing fewer full-time employees with increasing responsibilities and growth. Our responsibilities, for example, in the area of legislative and regulatory mandates has increased dramatically. AB 32, as we mentioned, has created a whole series of initiatives for us to pursue that didn't exist just two years ago, and yet we're doing this with fewer full-time employees. We've eliminated all of our discretionary overtime. Roughly, that translates to somewhere between $700,000 and $900,000 per year. That's a significant reduction. Now, I want to be very clear, that does not mean... That does not mean that we've reduced all of our overtime. We are an essential service provider. We do have emergency services, and many times that's done on overtime, but our discretionary overtime has been eliminated. We've eliminated, as you've mentioned earlier, and I'll be glad to answer questions on what we've done and what we continue to have, we've eliminated 50%, 57%, excuse me, of our take-home vehicles. We've reduced our overall travel budget by 45%. Now, this is our budget, and this, what we've done has shown it in a number of different areas. We budget according to our base rate and our adjustable rate. The adjustable rate essentially recognizes the fluctuating cost of our fuels, primarily natural gas, coal, to the degree nuclear. Our base rate is essentially associated with the ongoing, everyday cost of operating the electric utility, and this is the electric side. And I'd like to just go over these numbers just briefly with you so you have a sense of what we're doing and how the numbers reflect and work out. The first thing that I'd like to note is this is a balanced budget. This ends up with net income at the end of the year, and all things considered, the fact that we are not looking for any type of rate increase at all, that we are still providing the full service that we are expected to do. We're fairly confident that this is, this is a very, very tight budget. But let me go back to the year '07-'08 because you're going to see some numbers that don't tend to make sense, and I want to make sense out of them for you. If you notice, base rate revenue in '07-'08 was $128 million. We are proposing a budget this year of $124 million, which is certainly less than what we saw. There are a number of reasons for that, but the biggest single reason for that is we had quite a bit of additional non-operating income that year based on the growth and the fairly robust economy that we saw that year, which we are not seeing now, as you might imagine. As we go through and we look at what we're projecting for the end of this fiscal year, we're down to $120 million, and that reflects a number of different things. That reflects clearly the change in the economy, the fluctuation in energy costs. Now, while that's still our fixed base rate, as people use less, and if we go back a year ago, you may recall, a year ago, energy costs had spiked dramatically. So we saw, we saw a reduction in usage, temporary, which is pretty typical in this business, but nonetheless, a temporary reduction. So that also impacted our base rate revenues along with our adjustable revenues. So while there's a real fluctuation here, bottom line is that this number, the $124 number, we are very confident is the correct number. That's a fully staffed number for Glendale Water and Power. It reflects realistically what we think usage will be in the coming year, based on what we know of economic conditions and the volatility in the energy market. So we have, if we look at the coming year, we're budgeting at $124.8 million on our base rate revenue, approximately $94 million on adjustable rate revenue. And that is associated with the cost of natural gas, purchased power, our continued increase in additional renewable power, which at times does have a premium associated with it in terms of how much we pay. So that's a realistic estimate of where we're going to be in adjustable rate revenues. But what I'd like to do is draw your attention down to the expenses associated with that. And if you notice, they're pretty much the same. If, in fact, we find that the market isn't as volatile, that costs aren't what we think they are, it's balanced off by the revenues. If you recall, we have an adjustable portion of our rate, which accounts for the revenues that we see here, and we adjust that up or down depending upon what the actual market is. So this number could very well be higher or lower. Could very well be lower, actually, if things pretty much stay how they are. So what we've done is we have a base rate revenue based on what we know of the economy and of usage patterns. We have adjustable rate based on what we know of fuel volatility, a total revenue of about $224 million on the electric side. We have an expense of about $221 million, so we have a net income of $2 million here. Now, I want to bring your attention down here. I think this is very, very critical. We are showing the transfer to the general fund, which traditionally has been a percentage of revenue for GWP. What we are proposing is to limit the transfer to a fixed number, and that fixed number would be the exact same number that we transferred in this fiscal year, which on the electric side is $19.1 million. So it is no longer, we're no longer proposing a percentage, but rather a fixed amount. So essentially, the only thing, the only other thing I wanted to mention to you is one area that we are very, very focused on is exploiting the wholesale market. We believe we are now positioned to do so in a much better way than we were a year ago or even a couple of years ago. So you'll notice that we are stepping up what we consider to be net wholesale revenues. And what that means is our ability to sell energy outside of Glendale, into the markets outside of Glendale. And we have, we have changed how we do our energy trading. We are looking to make our own energy resources more efficient, and by doing so, we believe that this is a reasonable number, about a $5 million number. So when all is said and done, our net income is a bit more than $2 million. We maintain the transfer a little over $19 million. We have a capital program this year at $55 million. And essentially, the big numbers associated with that particular capital expenditure are the Glorieta Substation, which we brought to you a few weeks ago. That's probably our largest single expenditure in the coming year, along with the Smart Grid. Okay? So those two represent a pretty significant piece of this capital expenditure. Our year-end cash balance is $105 million. That's essentially our reserve. On the water side, it's a little bit different, and we have different issues on the water side. And I'd like to take a minute to go over them because I think they're critical, and we're going to be coming back to you in the next few weeks to talk a lot more about these issues. So this is a good place to jump off here. As you may recall, a year ago, a little more than a year ago, actually, we came to you to propose a series of base rate increases over the course of the next few years. These numbers here, starting at the actual $22 million on base rate back in '07-'08, and stepping up to our current projection of $25 million, are a direct result of the rate increases that we have, we have projected, and we have gotten approval to put in place. So base rate at this point, if nothing changes, if all usage patterns stay the same as they have been, this is what we're proposing. However, that's not what we are seeing. The adjustable piece of our rate, which is similar to the electric side in that we purchase approximately 70% of all of our water from the Metropolitan Water District, and we are subject to price fluctuations, you know, I won't use the word volatility here, but it is price fluctuations from Metropolitan, and since we get 70% of our water, that has a major impact on our costs. Those costs continue to go up. The projections from Met are that they will continue to go up at a fairly rapid rate. As I mentioned, we are tied into 70% of that. So we, this reflects what we now know of the Metropolitan Water rate increases. So again, the adjustable rate here in terms of revenues is equal to, more or less, the rate expense. So that's a net number. Now, let me bring you down to here because this is the number that we have to focus on. And if you notice, our net income, as it stands right now for the coming year, is a negative number. There are two reasons for that. We don't expect that to actually occur, but we have to show it that way because as of right now, this is based on what we know today. One of our largest initiatives over the last number of years and most successful and nationally understood is our initiative in the treatment of chromium VI. We have gone down the road in every aspect in terms of working with various agencies in developing two different treatment technologies. We are at the point right now where we are starting construction on the actual treatment facilities. We have, have worked with many different agencies. We've worked with the polluters who have created the chromium VI issue. There are various funding aspects associated with this, and as the national leader, which Glendale is, we feel an obligation to make sure that we continue to bring this project to its normal completion. However, part of the funding through the state of California was a $2.5 million grant, which until about three months ago, we fully expected as part of the funding for the chrome VI. This was rescinded. Since it's been rescinded, we still have an obligation to complete the plan, so we are moving forward in that regard. So 2.5 out of the 3.1 is the dollars that were rescinded. As it stands right now, we have every expectation that those dollars will be restored at some point in the future, sometime during the fiscal year. We have no complete assurance, however. So we believe that it's still, it's still the right thing to do to complete this project. Particularly now, it would be, it would not, from a business standpoint, it really wouldn't make sense to start to cancel contracts at this point, anyway. The rest of the difference between $2.5 and $3.1 million rests in the issue that we brought to you a couple of weeks ago, and we will again bring to you at the end of June. And that is the need to institute some type of water restriction here in Glendale starting this summer. We have been put on 10% reduction by Metropolitan Water, and as such, we have an obligation to do something here in Glendale in order to meet that reduction. We have already had four outreach meetings at your behest, and they've been very, very eye-opening, beneficial, and we will bring the results back to you in June, and we're going to make some changes in terms of what we're going to propose. But the bottom line here is that, as it stands now, we have to show a net reduction of base rate revenue based on the fact that we know, or we hope, we're going to have 10% less usage over the course of this fiscal year. So this number here, this $25 million, represents a 10% reduction in usage because we know we have to do that. However, since we don't have any approval on the rate side, the rates still reflect what it would take to run the utility at today's levels, but with a reduction in 10%. So we are going to be coming back to you with some proposals on a water conservation surcharge to make up for the lost revenue during this period of restriction, which, if approved, will get us back up to where we need to be and will eliminate this deficit. I hope that makes sense to you. Essentially, what this shows is 10% reduction of usage, but without any kind of compensating factor to up the operating costs to recognize that. So we would expect that sometime within the next two to three months that we will be able to rectify this situation. But as it stands today, we are showing a deficit. Now, let me take you down a little bit further. Again, on the transfer on the water side, we are proposing a $4.1 million transfer, which, again, similar to the electric side, now represents a fixed number rather than a percentage of revenue. We are proposing that. Our capital program, as you can see, this year, $30 million primarily is made up of the completion of Chevy Chase Reservoir and, as I mentioned, the first piece of our initiative into Smart Grid. Our closing year-end balance or reserve on the, on the water side is a little bit in excess of $27 million.
Before we move on to the next slide, I think it's important for both water and electric to remember at some point, I think we'll need to come back and pay more attention to the capital program budget. In both water and electrical, these numbers kind of reflect a given on your capital expenditures, and yet with pressures on rates, I think the challenge for us is to how to keep the rates at a level to achieve the strategic plan, and yet also be able to commit the level of capital that the department feels we need to. These budgets tend to reflect capital like a given, but the reality is you can do more or less capital each year. I think we need at some point to come back and have a conversation about the capital needs on both the electric and the water side, and how do we meet those long-term while maintaining the rate levels that the council wants and under the strategic plan get us to within 35% below Edison's rates. I think that's going to be a real long-term challenge for us. The capital budget in both water and electric is quite large. It's very aggressive.
It is.
There's a lot of work to be done, and it puts considerable pressure on rates and the operating side of the ledger. The depreciation, for example, on the electric side, I think was about, do you recall the depreciation on the electric side annually?
Thank you.
About $20 million, as I recall?
Yeah, $20.
About $20 million is the depreciation we take annually, and yet the capital program is multiples of that proposed each year. Not that it's not needed, it is, but it puts a lot of pressure on the operating side of the budget to have an aggressive capital improvement program. And so I think at some point, we need to come back and talk about how we fund that and its implications on the operating side.
And I do have a slide here that shows our proposed capital budget moving forward, but exactly as Mr. Starbord has mentioned, you know, we need to address it in terms of how we're going to fund it. For the coming year, we're fully funded, so that's not an issue for this year or even into the following year. But after that, yes, we have a significant issue that we have to discuss.
Also, before we, before we leave this chart, and Glenn mentioned the water transfer, he previously mentioned the electric transfer. The charter provides that the city can, at the end of the year, in fact, it says it shall, at the end of the year, transfer 25% of what is essentially the retail sales. It actually says 25% of all revenues excluding wholesale revenues, meaning power sales to other utilities or cities, and it defines it as wholesale in the charter. That would mean anything that's not wholesale that falls into operating revenues, you are obligated to take 25%. You don't do that because you take an action each year to take less. A lot of debate has taken place over the last couple of years about the level of that transfer. I should note that just mathematically, that is about 8.7%. If you look at the operating revenues on the electric side and the $19.1 million transfer, that's about 8.7% of wholesale sales, not, not outside the realm of what you see other municipal utilities doing as a transfer. I think the last time we did an update, our neighboring communities were in the rage of 5% to 7% in their transfers from the electric utilities.
Correct.
So just a note on that.
As Jim mentioned, this is our proposed capital budget moving forward for the next five years. In '09-'10 and '10 and '11, currently, we are funded. However, as we move forward, we have some challenges, and we'll be back to discuss that. But this gives you a general idea of where we go, and just without getting into the details of it. On the power management side, the numbers, as you see, increase as we move towards '11 and '12. Reason for that is, as I mentioned earlier, we need to do something with Grayson. We're not sure what that is yet. We don't know. So we're making some assumptions. We're giving some projections. That could change. We may, we may be able to push that out. We may have to push that out, but we know we have to do something. And it's all integrated because the efficiency of our Grayson Power Plant directly impacts how successful we are in dealing with the outside markets. It's a very, very good tool for us, but it also has to be kept technologically current. So that's, that's an issue that we need to look at, not for this year. On the electric services, I mentioned what some of the issues are. We have the Glorieta Substation. We still have a number of distribution and transmission circuits that need to be upgraded to get to a common voltage. We need to get all of our distribution voltage up to 12,000 volts, and we need to get all of our transmission voltage up to 69,000 volts. And so that's, that's included in those numbers. Water services, as I mentioned, we've got a couple of big issues for this coming year, which we're funded for, that's Smart Grid, and the conclusion of Chevy Chase Reservoir. And as you can see, then, then the dollars tend to get a little bit more consistent, and that's much more associated with doing a lot of upgrades with piping and the normal type of upgrade that we would do. Utility Operations Center, that's what's commonly known as the yard, which is where Grayson and all of the GWP operations are currently located. There's a number of things that There's a number of things that need to be done. In some cases, we have no choice because of some of the work that's being done around our yard. The new flyover, which has actually taken a piece of the yard away, requires us to make some changes. So at least for the '09, '10, '11 years, we are committed. We will be relocating and rebuilding a new warehouse, a new training building, relocating our inventory part of the yard, and then there's a number of other changes that need to be, need to happen at that location. Our challenges and impacts as we move forward. We talked about some of them, but I want to make sure that we really don't lose the criticality. We have committed to reducing our electric rates to 35% below Edison. That's important to us. There's been a lot of questions as to why Edison, why 35%. Edison is our competition. 35%, we believe, over the course of five years, is quite doable. That would put us down at the average, or even slightly below the average, of other municipal utilities in this area. Knowing what we know, the initiatives that we have in place now, we're confident that we can get there. We talked about the importance of increasing the Grayson efficiency, and we will come back with additional thoughts on that. We've talked about AB32 compliance and all the implications of that. The Smart Grid is key to how we will move forward with dealing with many of the challenges of the electric and water business, and we're one of the few utilities that's integrating electric and water on Smart Grid. We're very, very pleased and proud of that. On the water side, we need to expand our potable sources as much as possible, and that is what we're doing right now. There is a limit. There's a limit, and we're approaching that limit, it's what we can do, but we're looking at every possible option. We have a five-year plan to expand our recycled water. There's a lot of concern, a lot of interest with our customers in general. We've heard that in our outreach meetings, and we have a very specific plan on expanding the recycled water system. However, I want to be very, very direct about this. From an economic standpoint, it's hard to justify. From a social standpoint, it's easy to justify. So we need to figure out, which is what we're doing now, how to make this work, how to expand it, and make it economically attractive, and still being able to maximize the amount of recycled water that we can get. And then there's a very, very specific limit as to how much recycled water we can actually provide. Sustainable conservation. This is the issue that we are now dealing with, with our outreach meetings. You know, if we think about what occurs when energy fluctuates, when the price goes up and there's a shortage of energy, people stop using it, and then as soon as it tails off, people get right back to the same patterns we've always had. We cannot do that on the water side. We are reaching a point where we're asking people to reduce the use of water. This may be how we deal with this forever, or certainly for the foreseeable future. There is nothing that gives us, on the water side of the business, any optimism to expect that the sustained drought that we have and the overwhelming growth that we've seen in the southwest region of this country will abate us. At this point in time, it's already done the damage that we're seeing now in terms of water supplies. So sustainable conservation, particularly on the water side, is critical. And then finally, asset management, which is something we'll come back to you probably within the next couple of months with a much larger presentation, is key to being much more efficient in how we operate the water system, and we expect, once we do that on the water side, to expand that into the electric side. So those are our challenges, both short-term and long-term. There's a lot in there, but be happy to answer questions.
Mr. Starburt.
Just two areas where I think we need in time to schedule some more of your time to get in-depth in the GWP plan for the upcoming year. One is the use of recycled water. We recently sat down to look at some options for expanding the system, and lots of opportunities, but the economics, frankly, are just terrible in trying to figure out how to do that and have it be supportable. The second, as I mentioned earlier, the whole capital improvement program for both electric and water. I think we need to spend some time with you and talk about what the department has planned, the needs for those improvements, and the question of how do we fund that level of capital improvement, long-term, and its implications on our rates. So those are two key areas I think we need more time to talk about later on, as we have time to get into the summer, that I think would be important areas for you to bore down into a bit.
Mr. Weiger. Followed by Ms. Friedman.
Since we're putting everything on the table, is it also logical to assume that we could, along with furloughs, everything else on the table, talk about additional transfers temporarily with the general fund? I mean, if we get down to departments like City Clerk, Treasurer, where it's just no give, and you're transferring $19 million, we go to $20, $21 million, if we did that on temporary basis, is that another option for us to look at, even though it's not pretty? Yes or no?
Well, the answer, obviously, is yes. You certainly, the council--
Same. When it gets down to furloughs and everything else--
The council has the ability. I do have to tell you, though, I really think that that's an area where we shouldn't go. I'm not sure under what circumstance, I'm not sure how bad it would get before we'd recommend you go there, for a number of reasons. One is, it does continue to put so much pressure on our rates, and we have so many challenges now on the electric side, putting pressure on our rates, as it is, to begin to increase the transfer and dig that hole deeper, is just one that I think, I'm not even sure it should be on the list of very left resorts. Two is, we have been into the bond market now, and likely in the future, not near future, but the next few years, we will probably need to talk again about another bond issue for the electric side and maybe water side to meet the capital needs. The rating agencies now look very seriously at, I mean, they have always looked at that transfer, but at the level that we have it now, it is above other municipal utilities, probably by at least 2 percentage points, generally speaking. They look at it. If our rates are competitive and they see we have room to adjust rates if the need ever arises, and they've generally been comfortable. But as we noted in our overview, our rates are not at a level that we'd like them. We'd like them to be lower. To be dipping further into the transfer just inhibits our ability to achieve that objective.
I understand that, Mr. Starburt, but I'm just looking at the surplus net income. It's an option on the table. I might, I don't like transferring it. I sat here when it was a $10 million transfer, and it was a $10 million transfer for a decade or more.
Uh-huh.
And then bingo, 2001, it's gone from $10 million to almost $19 million. So I have not cared to do that, but for one reason or another, it's been done. So I'm just saying, these are unusual times, and if, is it an option to look at? When we see that break out of all the departments and everything down, and we start cutting departments we've already heard from today, if we're talking about more resources out of the police or out of the fire, where do we want to take the big hit? We want to go against water and power on a temporary basis? I don't know. I just, it has to be out there along with everything else.
Yeah. Here's my concern, is they generally aren't temporary. That's the problem. We constantly face the pressure, even during good times, of wanting to do more. And that's a good thing. We have a lot of need for services, and the departments and you want to provide more services and do a better job. But generally, as we've seen the transfer increase, it seldom, if ever, goes back the other way. And at a time when natural gas prices were low, our rates were generally low, we didn't have some of the other pressure on our rates that we have, frankly, it made a lot of sense for the utility to have to make a dividend payment to the general fund. My concern is, though, we just dig an awfully deep hole for ourselves if we rely on that option.
We just draw up a contract, have the five city council members agree, return the money.
Let me address two pieces, because, you know, I run the risk, and I knew this would happen--
Yeah, you put that up there.
--of showing, you know, a positive at the end of the year. There's one piece in there that could impact us greatly if it does not occur, and market conditions can change, and they do change, and that is our ability to sell outside the system. We've shown a net income of $5 million for the coming year. We expect to make that. We may not make that. If we don't make that, and that's cut in half, we're done. We're finished, okay? And that could happen. So that's why we do have a little bit of extra to account for that.
Good recovery.
Yeah. We need to show it that way, but that could, if conditions change, market volatility changes, that could affect that. The other thing that we're doing at GWP is holding a number of positions open in order to absorb potential positions coming in from the rest of the city. We are doing that. We've just done that in one case, very successfully, by the way, and we're very pleased that we were able to do that. But that is something we're doing to help the rest of the city.
Ms. Friedman.
Mr. Steiger, I'm no engineer, but from what you presented today and from the talks that we've had over the past few weeks, I'm very pleased with the direction that you've been taking, your department, in terms of efficiency and thinking ahead and really making a lot of substantial and sizable cuts to your budget. So I appreciate that. One thing I want to be careful, as we go forward, not to compromise, is our ability to help our customers to reduce their usage of our resources. Not only AB32, we have to be sure that we have the funding to comply with that, otherwise it's going to end up being a lot more expensive, but also whatever we can do to help our business owners, our homeowners, all of our ratepayers to reduce their consumption. So whether it's our programs to assist with solar, to help people be water-wise, I think that's one area we need to be really careful not to cut in. Yes, to be efficient, but we need to increase, I think, our commitment to that and increase our financing of all of that. And I really do believe that if we give people real tools and really help them financially to be able to use less resources, then the pressures to keep the rates low won't be as intense. So I would rather focus less on the immediate goal of reducing the rates and more on the goal of being able to help people financially and otherwise reduce their consumption so that it gets to the same point. They're paying less than what they're paying now, but they're doing that by being more efficient.
I completely agree. What I did not, because I didn't get into the details here, but that comes to the issue of our public benefits area, and that's really where we handle all of that. And we are basically maxing that out in terms of how much money we can spend and where we spend. I completely agree. And the only issue we have in that regard is more on the water side. As we move forward, there's more and more of a need to do that same kind of thing on the water side. We've got a pretty good program. Glendale's very, very effective with that, and we continue to get better at it on the electric side. The water side, however, is going to need even more work and more help than we give it now. And we're a little bit restricted, because on the water side, essentially, you can only charge what it costs for the water. So we don't have the same ability as we do on the electric side, where we can take additional funding. So we will probably come back to you in a month or two or three with a proposal on how to fund some additional public benefit-like programs on the water side, because I completely agree. That's the sustainability that we talk about, it's both electric and water, and that's critical. I completely agree with you.
Okay, I agree 110% with that, with Ms. Friedman's observations. So I'd like a little more detail on the Smart Grid. For instance, when do you actually plan to begin to roll it out? Maybe some of the initial costs, but savings that we'll begin to see, et cetera.
The Smart Grid will be rolled out, we expect, this summer. I don't know the exact time, but this summer. We're in our final negotiations now with the provider, okay? So we expect to have a contract in place very, very shortly. We'll then come to you for your approval. For this coming year, we're probably in the range of about $15 million in terms of what it will cost to roll it out for this year. We will start on the water side with replacing the water meters with automated water meters. Plus, just the fact that we're replacing water meters, water meters tend to just slow down. That's what they do, which means that you lose revenue. By the fact that we're replacing them, we'll have a much better revenue flow. The electric will start later this year, so they'll be parallel. They're just, one will be tracking the other. The electric will take longer to do, obviously, because we've got 88,000 meters, so it'll take a little bit longer. But what it means, okay, in specifics, to the customer, is customers, when the Smart Grid is put in place, will have access to real-time data at any given time. They'll be able to look to see what they're using right now, how much it costs right now. If they want, they can have their appliances linked into our system so that it can be turned on and off during peak or non-peak times. They'll be able to make choices, our customers will be able to make choices that they can't make now. Plus, we'll be able to finally put in rate structures that actually reflect what it costs for real power at that given time, which we haven't been able to do in the past. So just in that alone, that saves customers money. As you know, and I know, because my wife beats me up on it all the time, you know, if you use energy at certain times of the day or night, it costs the utility more. So we'll now have the ability to let the customers decide, hey, if I want to do my laundry at 11 o'clock at night, when it's only $0.05 a kilowatt hour, that's great. And that's what we'll see. And it will also create a much better means of conservation. So on the customer's side, that's what it means. From an operational standpoint, we will start to be able to put in place systems that will allow us to know when the power goes off. As you know, today, if your power goes off, there's only one way we know. You call us up. In the future, we'll know before you call us up that the power's out, and we'll have the ability, at some point, to be able to, from a centralized area, potentially move the power around so we can actually isolate it and even restore your power before the crews even get there. So those are the kinds of things that the Smart Grid will do.
And the last time I discussed this with you, there were still competing vendors, technologies, et cetera, but you and the staff are comfortable that the technology that you've chosen, without question, will be the appropriate one?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, we have gone so far with a vendor that's, you know, been in the business very, very, a long time, is one of the leaders in the area. It's not an upstart. We felt that was very, very important for us. So, yes, and we are also comfortable with the idea that the technology is now at the point where it makes sense to create a common database.
Okay. Then I have a quick question. Some of the minor issue, perhaps, but still symbolic, some of the trucks that I mentioned and so forth, in terms of take-home vehicles, I mean, are they equipped to drive directly to the site and begin work, or what is it?
Every one of our vehicles, take-home or not, are completely equipped, particularly if it's a take-home vehicle. They have not only the kind of equipment that's necessary to do some type of emergency response, but also a limited amount of inventory, if need be, the personal equipment necessary to do the job. So, yeah, they're all completely equipped.
Right. So the, I can see the Ford vans, the big 150 vans and so forth. How about the little Ford Rangers, the same way?
Yes, same way. Everything is, yeah.
And the Ford Expedition, is that also--
It is. It is. We are, however, going to change out that vehicle. So that will not be a Ford Expedition.
2002 sedan.
Yeah, that, no, it's not a sedan. It's a Dakota pickup.
I'm not talking about that.
Yeah, there's a sedan.
Oh, actually, you're right. The Chevy Polo sedan.
Yeah, that's our superintendent of water, and that is equipped, if he needs to do something, yes.
The equipment's in the trunk, not in the backseat?
It's in the trunk, yeah. Well, of course, he's a superintendent, so he doesn't need as much equipment, he doesn't need inventory, but the equipment he needs is in there, yeah.
Then in terms of your, in terms of your department organization, you've got one, two, three, four, you've got basically five assistant general managers, all of them with obviously a different task.
Right.
In the event of retirements, et cetera, do you can see that there might be an ability to consolidate some of those?
Yes. You know, when I came in here 15 months ago, I took a look at what it would take to make the organization reflect where we are at that given moment. And essentially, what I looked at, and we had some options. One of the options, by the way, was to have basically a deputy general manager. Many systems have that. Deputy general manager just assumes all responsibility for operations, so a number of those AGMs would report to that person, and then I would be doing other things. And I felt strongly, at the time, that it was important to be closer to the organization here. There was a lot of concern about a disassociation with upper management with the field operation. So what I tried to do was develop an organization that got as close to the field as possible, and that's what this represents. Now, as we move ahead, as we look at the changing environment, and certainly, over the course of the five-year strategic plan, there is a possibility that we could take another look at-- another look at this, yes, very much so. In fact, I've been thinking about it more and more. But as it stands today, that organization works very, very well, and it is working quite well, actually, other than the fact that we don't have the AGM of finance in place yet. And quite honestly, that's been a significant deficiency in our organization. And when you look at the numbers that we deal with and you see what we're talking about, that's critical. That's probably the most critical position.
Any other? Ms. Friedman, followed by Mr. Najarian.
I just have one other question. Sole landfill is in the purview of Public Works, but assuming that we can get some kind of waste-to-energy conversion going up there, have you taken that into account in any way in your long-term projections of how that would impact your budget or the electric side of your operation?
Yes, very, very much so. In fact, that's a topic of conversation almost daily, even before I was here today, this morning, we were talking about that. The current landfill gas operation, which provides gas to Grayson, right now is creating a drag on the system, so to speak, because of its cost. What we would like to do is see something put in place that is high technology, allows us to get the gas at the normal cost associated with that, and then do what needs to be done to provide electric energy, either directly, either right there, directly with some technology that we could install at that location, or back into Grayson. But one way or the other, yes, we are focused on that. It's a big issue for us, yeah.
So what do you think, I mean, I know that you don't even know what the technology is, but what would be kind of the long-term effect of that in terms of your budget?
Oh, I have a five-year projection, which as Mr. Starbird so accurately mentioned, we're not showing today, but it shows very much at the end of. If we go to the end of the contract, which is 2014, if we cannot do anything between now and 2014, our budget just drops right on down, okay, which actually helps our rates. We're locked in for the moment. We're looking at lots of options. So we would like to do that well before 2014, and that's why we've accelerated our efforts. In fact, Steve Linz came to you last night on an issue that is associated with that in terms of having a consultant look at the options, yeah.
To put it in some perspective, our electric rate is about 14 cents per kilowatt?
16 cents?
16 cents per kilowatt. If we could eliminate just the added cost of the gas contract, that is, how much extra GOP is having to burn in natural gas to utilize the methane gas and the various costs of acquiring the methane gas, it was somewhere between eight and nine million dollars a year. That's a little less than a penny on our rate. So on a 16-cent current rate, if you can reduce it a penny, you're about a 6% reduction in rates. So that one contract could have a 5% to 6% impact on our rates. The other pressure point we talked about before is the Portland Gas Electric Contract that we continue to address. That's just coincidentally about the same magnitude in cost annually, so there's about another penny, or 5% or 6% on our rate.
Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Steiger. A couple of questions. Let's just look at the chart on page six. You're talking about the total base rate revenues of 124 million?
Yes.
And the total base rate expenses of 127 million?
That's correct.
So we're losing?
Well, we're losing only in the impact of, you know, base rate to base rate, revenue to expenses. However, we also have revenues coming in from wholesale.
Let's forget wholesale for now. Let's just look at the retail.
That's correct.
Is this because there's that 6%, 7% theft in the system?
Partially, partially. It's hard for us to put a real number on that, but clearly, there's an impact. I don't know if it's 6% or 3% or 8% could be that much.
I think, I mean, I would like to see, I would like to see an aggressive campaign towards identifying the thefts, if it means passing some civil penalties. I mean, we were getting ready to charge banks $1,000 a day for not cutting the grass on the homes that they now own. Something like this, if we're talking about the tune of 3, 4, 5 million dollars a year, if this money had come out of a bank, this would be the biggest heist in the United States. So I would fully like to see some sort of program where either our inspectors can help us, our readers can help us identify theft, along with aggressive enforcement and aggressive penalty system where we can just cut this to an end. I mean, we're cutting departments, although this isn't funded from the general fund, but we're cutting departments left and right, jumping all over them for not cutting an extra $10,000, $20,000. I think we really need to take an aggressive look at this, and maybe you can come up with a plan with a police department or some other way to really crack down on these people that are stealing electricity.
Over the course of the last three months, we've done exactly that. We haven't brought it to you, actually, we've kind of low-keyed it, but if I really wanted to put Tammy Vallier on the spot, she could come up and explain it. But we have an aggressive program in place, and it's going to get more aggressive, so I agree. But we can bring that to you, so you can see exactly what it is we're doing.
Let me just come in, excuse me. And are we following through with criminal prosecution?
Well, that's an issue.
Or is this just a civil matter?
Yeah.
The DA's office. Okay, but we will refer to the district attorney for criminal prosecution, because that's what it is, just theft, as Mr. Najarian.
In fact, let me ask Tammy, over the course of the last month or two, how many have we found a few already, right?
About five.
Just since we just started?
I mean, I just don't want to say, oh, you know, sorry, you've either turned your meter upside down or bypassed the meter, you know, now plug it in and be a good citizen. I mean, these people need to be punished. We need to show that there's severe penalties involved and some deterrents in our system. So someone who's thinking about it will say, oh, no, look, this could really be, they could end up either leaning on my home, or, I mean, this is a whole other large discussion, but I'd like to really crack down on that. So my other question is, let's again just look at the retail side of electric, and if we eliminate the wholesale revenues, we're in the hole somewhat.
Correct.
So if someone says our rates are too high, well, one more question. So these rates and current revenue and expenses are not contributing on the electric side to our reserve, is that correct?
Well, they do contribute to the reserve this year if everything goes exactly as planned.
Forget wholesale.
Oh, well, no. If you forget wholesale, that's correct, yes. That's correct.
We're down $2 million or so with the current projections. So if someone is to say that our rates are too high, and they're too high because we're currently transferring money to the general fund, that's a completely wrong statement as far as the electrical side is concerned.
Well, the rates are high because of some of the other things we've talked about, okay, in terms of...
I mean, but we're not jacking the rates, getting a nice cushion and then transferring it to our general fund.
No, no, that's not what we're doing.
These revenue, not the revenue, but the fund balances, the reserves that we have, are accumulated from years past.
Correct.
Okay, so let's get that clear. There's been a lot of misperception out there in the community, and protests and TV interviews and all that, that our rates are too high, and they're too high because we're using them to pay the fire department salaries or the police department salaries. And that's complete falsehood.
Bottom line is, if we get some of the issues that we just discussed squared away, our rates will be reasonable and within the average of the municipal systems here in California, with the transfer as it stands. Correct.
But we're not jacking the rates to take that money this year currently and transferring it out. We're eating into a previously large reserve that we've had, and you've shown us that it's going to continue to be, we're going to have some challenging years ahead.
We are, yes.
Because that money is going to be used up at the current rate in the next few years.
Within three years, we will have a significant issue, which we're going to have to address, you know, shortly, yes.
Okay. I mean, I just take offense when people imply that our rates should be lower. I mean, if our rates go lower, we're going to be deeper and deeper into the hole in the, I'm just looking solely at the electrical retail side of it.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions or comments, Mr.? Oh.
Not a question, just a comment. First of all, I am glad to hear that converting garbage to power is the topic of around the water cooler at GWP.
It really is. It really is. Right, Steve? It really is. We're exciting people, you know. It's an exciting topic. Oh, yeah.
I would, well, Councilmember Najarian brought up the issue I wanted to bring up about the theft issue. So assuming that it is not, say, Mayor Boger coming across the border from Pasadena with a giant extension cord and plugging into Glendale, can we please bring more detail on this back to the council? Because I think you alluded to it, Mr. Steiger, before, when you've been here talking about the strategic plan. And I don't know about my colleagues, but I received a lot of inquiry about that. A lot of people are very curious about that. And I, for one, would also like to hear more about it. What is the nature of it and how we are dealing with it? So I would echo what Councilmember Najarian was asking there about that.
We shall do that.
And my congratulations to you for getting your photo on the cover of Glendale Water and Power.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Weaver, any questions?
Well, no, no, fine. The engineers are doing a good job over there. I've sat here 13 years and gone through three Water and Power directors, and as far as I can tell, the progress we've made with Glenn surpasses anything we saw before. A lot of good logical thinking and organization going on in it, and I'm very happy with what he's doing. You have good credibility, in my view.
Thank you. And it's a team, it's a team approach. I truly mean that. We've got a good team here at GWP.
I know what you're saying, yes.
So thank you.
I agree, Mr. Steiger.
And I like your structure.
Thank you.
Doing it horizontally so you can be more hands-on.
I agree, Mr. Steiger. You're doing a very good job, and I attribute it to your managerial skills and not that engineering side.
That's true.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, it is 12:10. Why don't we take a break? We'll adjourn, or recess till 12:45, and then hopefully we can do police and fire this afternoon. That would be the goal, or recess. May 20th Budget Study Session, Mr. Starber.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'll now move on to the Fire Department. Chief Scoggins.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Harold Scoggins, Fire Chief. I'm going to take you through our budget presentation for next fiscal year. And I'll start off with our mission statement. It's pretty simple in nature, to prevent or reduce the loss of life and the destruction of property from fire, medical, and other hazardous materials in different types of emergencies. But we really sum it up in three words, in mitigation, prevention, and education. And everything that we do in the Fire Department really focuses on those three core concepts there. It's the mitigation of emergencies. So when someone picks up that phone and they call 911, we're responding there to solve the problem. The prevention of the emergencies before they happen, through our prevention efforts in planning and engineering and different things like that to try to solve the problems before they even occur. And then in education, we really have a focused program throughout the community on education, from kids to adults and different things like that. Our core services are to respond to emergencies and make sure we control them when we get there, inspect and evaluate the buildings, provide public education, maintain our apparatus and our numerous facilities, and make sure our employees are up to speed on our training and different things like that. Our sections of responsibility, my office coordinates the day-to-day operations of the Fire Department and the managing, the budgeting, and just the planning of where we're going as a division. Our operations section is the area that really focuses on responding to 911 emergencies, and those are all the firefighters staffed in our nine fire stations. There's a lot of things that go along with that to make sure that we're ready to respond to any given emergency on any given day. We really focus on our Training and Safety Section on proficiency training, which is our basic fundamentals, holes and ladders and equipment operations, our standardized training, which may be our EMT and our hazardous materials, first responder training and different things like that. We have a very active fire prevention bureau in our Planning Section and our Environmental Management, and they're housed in two different locations, one across the walk here in the city yards and one at 780 Flower Street where our Environmental Management Center is housed. And we have two support sections in the Fire Department. We have our Support Chief, who's in charge of our EMS Section, our Emergency Preparedness for the Department, Public Education and Public Information. And we have an Administrative Chief who focuses on our mechanical maintenance. And we have a fleet of 78 vehicles that really takes a lot of coordination to make sure those vehicles are all ready to respond on any given day. Some of his other focuses are our Verdugo Dispatch Center and our backgrounds. But while we're on vehicles, real quick, I know we talked about take-home vehicles. I think this would probably be an appropriate place for us to talk about it. We have seven vehicles on that list in the Fire Department that are assigned take-home vehicles. We only have six that go home currently. One of the positions is frozen at this time, so we actually have six vehicles that actually go home. Those vehicles are radio-equipped, code-three response, and all of our chief officers and captains who drive those vehicles home, they can respond in at any given time, and they can respond directly to the event. And I'll give you a couple of examples of different things that take place. As you remember, most recently, the Santa Barbara fires. One of the things that happened around here in our area is we launched strike teams out of our area. Many times, a Glendale Battalion Chief is on that strike team. So we get another battalion chief en route coming from home immediately. And if there's an incident before he gets here to the city, he can be monitoring those things and go directly to the incident. Or on different occasions, there may be multiple incidents that break out in the city, and we get another chief officer rolling in. And there's also a variety of roles and responsibilities when they get here for larger-scale incidents. To review our service level cuts for 2008 and 2009, when we started this fiscal year, just to do a quick review, we reduced the staffing on one of our engines.
Which had us with some additional expenses that we were able to handle with our reserves that are in Verdugo, but they're also going to bring in additional revenues to the center to offset those costs, which is very important to note.
Chief, do you recall Glendale's contribution under the new contract scenario?
It's approximately, I want to say about 848,000, something around, something around in there.
That's about what it's been in previous years.
That's about what it's been in previous years. Our fire paramedic fund, this fund has been very challenging over the years, and there's a couple of factors associated with that, and one is the write-offs, and those are the receipts that we send out for billing that the customers can't pay, and the other ones are the write-downs due to Medicare, which is the medical programs that elderly, elder Americans have for their medical insurance, and they basically pay approximately 60 cents on the dollar. So if we send out a bill for $1,000, we should expect to get back about $600. The second challenge is Medi-Cal. Medi-Cal is for lower-income individuals, and basically what the state pays is about 16 cents on the dollar. So if we send out a bill for $1,000 for our services, then we receive back a payment of approximately $165. So those are some of the challenges. We expect that to equal about approximately $5 million in the next fiscal year between the write-offs and the write-downs. And this is, one of the numbers that's talked about a great deal is our transfer in. If you can look at our '08 transfer in was 2.1 million, and our '09, '10 transfer in is expected to be about 3.5 million, but we expect to have a cost savings at the end of that, and this is one of the reasons why we felt the need to address our EMS service delivery program. Overtime has been a big part of the conversation for the fire department, so I thought it would be appropriate to address it here and let you know how we have been doing this past year, and put some numbers up there and give you some understanding of what that is. If you look at our '07, '08 actual overtime at $7.7 million, and then if you look at where our year-end estimate is expected to be this year at $6.2 million. But the significance to these numbers are, we will receive back all of our reimbursements for our mutual aid overtime in the amount of 1.4 million, but we will receive back more than that. We will receive back the cost for our apparatus going out. We will receive back the work comp insurance plus a 16% administrative rate on the top of that. So we expect to receive back approximately $300,000 more than what's to offset our costs there. Film details, we do a lot of film details here, and many of them require a fire and life safety officer. The individuals who come to get the film permits, there's a rate that's paid for our firefighters, and that offsets that cost of $95,000. So when you subtract those two numbers out of that $6.2 million number, it gives you what the real cost is. And there's another factor involved there also is our injury-on-duty costs. When firefighters get injured on duty, we hire back behind them to staff the department. The number for up to this point this year is approximately $300,000 to hire back, so that's added in that number also. One of the keys for us to really keep this number into balance for our staffing purposes is to make sure we're staffed up all the time. That's been a key for us, is having enough firefighters to staff the department on a daily basis and not very many vacancies. And if you look at our '07 vacancy rate compared to our '08, '09 vacancy rate, you can see it significantly lower. So one of the things that I will be coming back to talk to you about and ask for your input and permission is to do some hiring at the beginning of 2010, because in order for us to keep our overtime rates in balance, we need to make sure we have enough firefighters. One of the ways that we can offset our costs for hiring these firefighters and the recruit academy is to take the savings or the revenue from our mutual aid account, the overages, and fund our future recruit academies. That way, we don't have to come back to the general fund to ask for $300,000 to $400,000 or whatever it would cost to fund our recruit academies. Not large numbers, we're looking at hiring constantly small numbers to make sure we stay up on our numbers. That's a key for us. Service level changes, these are some of the changes that we have already experienced this year. The elimination of our deputy fire chief, the operations deputy, that was Deputy Chief Steve Howard who retired, and that position was eliminated. And some of the effects of him retiring and that position being eliminated is myself picking up more of those duties, and all of the operations chiefs and training chiefs now report directly to me, and I don't have that second layer inside the organization. We eliminated a firefighter's position in fire prevention, and that position is now a non-sworn position as we have been working hard over the last 10 years. And many of you may remember, our Fire Prevention Bureau was made up of sworn firefighters and engineers maybe eight to 10 years ago, and there's been a solid effort to transition all of those positions to non-sworn professional fire prevention engineers and inspectors. And this was our last position to transition out of there. The GFFA contract amendment, we worked hard with our employee association and their contract amendment, their deferral of their pay raises for the next two years is really significant to our program, and the additional $800,000 for the potential of a paramedic EMS delivery program change, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. But to give you an overview of what our targets were, and we're not there yet, we're still working hard to get there, but our 7.5% overall is approximately $2.7 million. With the elimination of our deputy fire chief position, that was approximately $216,000. The elimination of our firefighter was $115,000, and the GFFA contract amendment was 1.2 million. That equals 4.1%. The other items that we have as recommendations are one of our fire prevention positions, a fire protection specialist one, and EMS service delivery change, and that's our BLS program. And I'd like to take a few minutes to talk to you about that to give you understanding. I delivered a staff report to the city manager a couple of days ago, and also to each of you, I think via email, but basically, we're looking at changing our EMS service delivery to assist in the economic challenges that we're facing. And in a nutshell, what we're looking at doing is pulling one rescue ambulance with firefighter, paramedics out of service, which is two positions per day, a total of six positions, and putting in service a BLS, non-sworn ambulance operator position. There are some keys to this, and how we structure this is very important. And first of all, one of the things you have to understand, I think the finances explain themselves, but one of the things that we really need to talk about is, you know, how we structure this is just so important, but you have to look at our call load and understand our call load to really have a full understanding. Last year, approximately 4,600 of our EMS transports were ALS transports. Another 3,500 were BLS transports. They were probably on the borderline of being ALS, but they were still BLS. And there was another 3,000 or so that were-
But Chief, for the public, why don't, I read the document, but for the public, why don't you break down the acronym so that they understand?
Absolutely, I apologize for that. An ALS transport is a transport that requires advanced life support. And what that could mean is, that means if someone is having chest pains and they need narcotics or drugs to support that condition and sustain it until they get to the hospital, life-threatening type situations. BLS is basic life support. I've fallen and I sprained my ankle, and I need a splint, and I need a ride to the hospital. I've fallen out of bed, and I'm just feeling sick right now. No real diagnosis, but we get those type of calls also. That would be considered a BLS type of a transport. And assessments are, when our firefighters show up on scene, and after they evaluate the patient and their medical condition, and find out the history and the medications that each patient has taken, sometimes they make decisions that, you know, you can be transported by a family member or a friend. And our key to that, a part of that, is keeping our ALS resources available for ALS calls. So the program change and pulling one of our ALS units out of service and using that 24-hour time block for BLS units would give us a secondary option, which is very important. But what we do with those paramedics become a key to this entire program. Right now, we have the five ALS rescue ambulances, and we have five fire engines that also have paramedics assigned to those engines as assessment engines. What we would do is redeploy those paramedics, two per day, to additional engines, which could give us up to seven assessment engines out in the field along with the four ALS rescue ambulances. And the program that we're looking at for our BLS component is looking at our peak call times, which means that we know we have a 24-hour block a time. But from 12:00 at night to 6:00 in the morning, we may not need a fifth rescue ambulance or a BLS unit on the street. But we probably have some peak times between 12:00 noon and 8:00 in the evening where there's a lot of people in the city, and there's a lot of movement going around, going around town, that we may need that sixth unit. So we're going to look at that 24-hour block and break it up actually in two shifts to give us more coverage to meet our need here in the community. We have looked at all the numbers and the different programs that are going on around Los Angeles and Orange County and departments who are doing this, and we're recommending this program, and we feel that it would be successful in this format here in Glendale. The second part of that component is our dispatching component, which is a main trigger point in this program, and that's tiered dispatching. And that, all of our dispatchers are EMD trained, that's emergency medical dispatching, and what we would do is implement a program to now where they can tier the dispatching of EMS calls, which becomes the trigger point for this entire operation, to have the dispatch be an ALS response or a BLS response. The only difference would be the BLS ambulance unit or the ALS. The fire engine or the ladder truck company would still respond, because just like I said, we're going to redeploy those paramedics to engine companies now that do not have paramedics, so most likely, there would be an ALS, a paramedic assessment engine showing up to provide additional assessments. So if there was a need for an upgrade in the response or the transportation, that first paramedic or first EMT on scene could do that for those units responding to the scene. Future challenges-
Chief, I'm sorry, we should probably note, if you go back to the last slide-
I hope this could be a challenge.
That's why we let Bob Elliott do it.
Oh, I got it. I practiced.
We should, we should, we should note, the basic life support program is outlined, of course, would take some time to implement, so you're not going to accomplish the $800,000 savings all in fiscal year '09, '10. Chief, what do you estimate, six months plus to get it implemented?
We think we can get this program implemented in six months.
Okay.
In six months, and there's some factors to that. We have been keeping our ambulance stock up as our older units have gone out of service with this thought process in mind, so we have reserve ambulances that would be directed to this program. Our people have been out talking and learning and getting programs from many different agencies. We've been working with our employee association to making sure everyone is taking this slow walk together, because this is a significant change for the organization if this is the direction the council gives us to go. So we think in approximately six months, we could stand this program up.
Very good.
Future challenges, impacts, and opportunities. One of the things that, as an organization, that we need to do is a strategic plan, and I'll be bringing a request to you in a couple of weeks to ask for, asking for transferring of funds from our salary savings to partake in a strategic plan for our operation. BLS implementation, we've already talked about that. Our Fire Station 26 subfloor and bathroom issue that you allotted $300,000 for in the last fiscal year has been very challenging. That's one of the positions that that support captain, they would have took the reins of that project and moved it right through. Right now, we're trying to handle that with the station personnel, and it's pretty challenging to do it that way. Our ISO, Insurance Service Officers Survey, and they do our class rating. We're in the middle of that right now. They're here, they're evaluating our water system, which is 40% of that rating. They're evaluating our dispatch center, which is 10% of that rating, and they're evaluating our fire department, which is 50% of that rating. The things that they look at in the fire department is our training, our equipment, and our staffing. We think we have done well with all of those things. We don't foresee any problems right now, but we're turning in notebooks of information, and the ISO evaluates that, and our goal is to make sure that we keep that Class 1 rating for our organization. Adding two additional agencies to Verdugo Fire Communications, we have received requests for services from two additional cities. That's always a challenge when you bring in a new city to that communication center, but we've done it before and will do it again. It'll just be a little challenging. Opportunities, one of the opportunities I'd like to talk to you a little bit about is our paramedic assessment fee. Right now, we have a voluntary subscription program that's $60 a year, $5 a month for the community to sign up for. We have approximately 2,000 people signed up in the community. I think one of the opportunities for us is to talk about maybe taking that to the vote and see if the community would be willing to commit to every household in Glendale to a paramedic assessment fee at $60 a year. It would be tiered, there would be an elderly rate, and there would be a lower income rate. And approximately 77,000 households, it could generate over $4 million a year to the community at $5 a month. Very reasonable for a very essential service. And like I said in the beginning, when the community picks up the phone and calls 911, there's no excuses, and I tell our firefighters this all the time, don't bring me any excuses if something goes wrong. It's very important that we're able to respond with the needed resources and equipment to solve any problem that's thrown in front of us. This would be something that can help us out. I'd like to, later on, hopefully in the future, engage the council in the conversation on your thoughts on taking something like that to the voters. I think it would be very beneficial to our organization. And the second one is a fire inspection fee for our fire companies. Our Fire Prevention Bureau already charges a fee for their inspection time. Our neighbors in Burbank and Pasadena both charge fees for their firefighters who go out and do residential and business inspections. Pasadena charges $166 per hour, and they bill in 15-minute increments. Burbank charges $91, and they bill in 30-minute increments. We do approximately 3,000 of these inspections annually. I think it's a good idea. I think that it's reasonable. Whenever we have an incident here in the community, the first thing that the insurance company, or one of the first things that the insurance companies ask for is they ask for a copy of your last fire inspection. They want to see if we have done our due diligence to make sure these buildings were fire-safe before they pay off on insurance claims. Biannually, we go through every business and every sixth unit or more apartment building, and we do a pretty thorough fire inspection according to the fire code and the building code. So at a later date, I'd like to engage the council in the conversation on that topic also.
Chief, to be clear on that, we do not charge for the initial inspection. We do charge if, though, we have to come back on a re-inspection?
We can, we have not in the past. For fire company inspections, we have not in the past.
Oh, neighborhood services.
Right. Most other inspectors in the city do charge for their time for doing inspections. Our fire companies, who do approximately 3,000 inspections per year, are probably the only group of inspectors in the city that there is no cost. And our neighbors on both sides of us are doing it. I've talked to both of their fire chiefs. The programs have been very successful there. It's tough to get used to, but once you understand it and you see the value in it, their communities have accepted it. Questions, comments?
Okay, any questions or comments? I'll start. Yeah, I agree 100%. We should absolutely go after a inspection fee, especially if Pasadena and Burbank have established those fees. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't, shouldn't go in that direction. Now, the paramedic assessment fee, the 2,000, what is the, how much money are we getting for the 2,000 that are signed up?
Just, just over $100,000 a year. And I polled the LA area fire chiefs on this question to find out if there was any other communities out there doing this sort of thing. It's all voluntary. The only community that takes it to a vote in a similar fashion is the community of San Marino, and they take it to their voters every four years, and it's termed as police, fire, and EMS assessment. And it's $77 annually, and every four years, they bring it back to their voters for approval. And they've been doing that for quite a while.
In terms of getting our money back for the expenses incurred, Medicaid and Medi-Cal, we do absolutely bill those two agencies and do get our money back?
Yes, we do. But it's just, for example, Medi-Cal, for lower-income individuals. Medi-Cal pays approximately $165 on a bill. So if the bill's $1,000, they're paying $165. 24% of our EMS runs are, 24% are Medi-Cal, 38% are Medicare. So our primary call load is on these two systems, which we're collecting 60 cents on the dollar and 16 cents on the dollar. The write-offs are the no-pays, and that's approximately 18% of our call load. We have, I think, and it has been for a while, we're looking at a shift here in the aging population, which means that elderly patients, they may not have family members to take them to the hospital and different things like that. So we expect our call load to increase in that area in the future just because of the aging population. We expect the Medi-Cal call load to continue to rise as it has due to the nature of the economy, the restructuring of insurance programs, and different employers, and different things like that. So we foresee challenges in the future with this fund.
Okay, I've asked this question for years. In terms of our recovery, our percentage of recovery, et cetera, I mean, do we go out for an RFP with agencies that are essentially collection-type of agencies? How do we go about?
We use Whitman Billing Company to do our billing for our EMS invoices, and they actually go after individuals for collections. And they take things to collections, but they write off many of them, and they have an incentive to collect because that's how they get paid, by collections. But they do the best they can, but we're still planning on writing off a million dollars and writing down a lot more than that.
Yep. Okay, well, and then overall, in terms of your BLS program, I think that is absolutely the way to go. There's no, there's no question about it. If you can implement it in six months, and I think you should definitely try to do it in that short a period of time, but the sooner, the sooner the better. Now, in fact, would that mean that sort of new paramedics would be, would be hired? How exactly would you go about?
What we would do is restructuring this program to complement our cadet program, and we're going to use it as a pool and put a time limit on their employment. We would put a bulletin out for EMT-qualified individuals, which is, you have to come in with that qualification to be in this program. Now, if you put that next to our cadet program, you don't have to come in with that as a cadet, but in one year, you have to have that. In one year, you have to have a fire academy. In one year, you have to have, pass a physical abilities test. What we're going to look to do is try to step our cadets up into the next phase of this program to continue to prepare them to be firefighters in the future. And that's how we're looking at it, is to complement our existing programs.
Okay. No, I think it's a great idea. I think you're really on to something there. I don't think service is going to suffer at all, quite frankly. I think, in a way, it's sort of an enhancement. Okay, well, that's all I have for now. Other questions or comments? Mr. Njerian?
Question on the BLS again. Question on the BLS again. Number one, would we be facing any liability issues if, if we had at one point provided, well, currently, the ALS, and then we come down and have a lesser level of service should something happen? Scott, is there any, any sort of chinks in the immunity armor to, you know, that we could get zinged at?
There's always, Mr. Mayor, members of council, there's always the potential that a court could deviate from past precedent and determine, for example, that you've had some mandatory duty, but right now, the way the law is, from the Court of Appeals decisions, the Supreme Court decisions, and also the statutory immunities we have, I don't see it.
Okay. The other, the other point on that is-
You're immune from liability for either failing to provide or negligently providing firefighting services.
The way the chief has designed it is you'll have an assessment by a paramedic, and so you don't, you don't, you don't make the entire call by the dispatcher and then dispatch BLS, and that's, and then arrive to find out, oh my goodness, it's more than we anticipated. You have an assessment by a paramedic.
Well, that may not happen 100% of the time. The dispatchers will tier the dispatch, but I have had a brief conversation with the head of LA County EMS. This is not that new a concept. It's a, it's a, it is a lesser service, but we are not diminishing our service because we still have ALS resources to dispatch to that call. We're going to be basing our dispatches on the information that the caller gives us. I've talked to Long Beach Fire Department, who has this type of program, and they have not faced any challenges, but I don't believe we are going to face any challenges that we aren't already currently facing today from our program.
Call is, grandpa's complaining of dizziness. Oh, maybe it's a BLS call. We send the BLS on the way, he suffers a cardiac arrest, we don't have the, either the training, the proper manpower or equipment, and he doesn't make it to the hospital.
Two points.
How do we prevent that situation?
Two points. This program will be overseen, and the call typing will be directed by a medical director. It will not be our dispatchers making the call, but they will have a protocol on how they do the dispatch. But if a person had a heart attack en route to the hospital, the only difference today on what would happen is, they would not be able to give them drugs if a person had a heart attack en route to the hospital, but EMTs can defibrillate, they can provide oxygen to the brain until they got to the hospital, which is most likely, if that happened en route to the hospital, even if you're in a paramedic RA, there's a good chance that they may not pull over. They may start lifesaving measures with CPR, shocking you and breathing for you, and get straight to the hospital. So that can happen today. A person dizzy call, that will be evaluated by the information that the caller gives. It may trigger an extra question or two, but it's based on that information.
Now, if we go to the, let me shift gears a little bit and go to the paramedic annual fee-
Yes.
-that we have. Does that preclude the department from charging private insurance then after that?
No, absolutely not. Just like our subscription program works today, if a member of the community is signed up for our paramedic subscription program, they will never receive a bill. But if they have Medicare or Medi-Cal, they will receive a bill or their medical insurance. That's currently how the program is structured today. But the individuals, the household in the community, would be covered, and that's the goal.
But if I had Medi-Cal today, I wouldn't get a bill. I'd say, well, Medi-Cal, whatever they pay you, they pay you, and you're forced to accept that.
Yes, and then we are accepting that.
Okay. So the incentive, what would be the incentive then for many of our households that have Medi-Cal or Medicare patients to?
The incentive would be to fund-
To voluntarily-
Right. The incentive would be to fund an essential service. We think it's priced reasonably, at $5 a month. Many times, in the course of a day, we may buy a drink at Starbucks for $5 a day. Many times, in the course of a day, we may buy a drink at Starbucks for $5 a day. We think it's priced reasonably and it will help sustain the program. This is an essential service and that's what we're looking to try to do.
Are questions or comments? Okay, chief, thank you very, very much. I did say quarter to two and two of the council members have to be out by two.
At this point in time, we won't move on to the police department because they would hardly get started when we need to stop. So we're going to load up a, just an update real quick and also pass out to you work that Michelle's been doing as we've been meeting, that just will kind of update our status of where we're at and then we'll be finished for today. So just take a minute. This, and Bob will have this up on the screen in just a second. This is the, our continuation of the recap that we've been provided, council. This will be the third version of the recap. The first page, on the first page, we have the two slides. Okay, you can go ahead and go on through the first one. This is exactly as you have seen what we showed you in the first study session. This is where we were at study session number two, where we indicated based on some actions that have already taken, starting out with the shortfall, the estimated shortfall of $9.7 million, that we were down to a revised budget shortfall of 1.3. I think we labeled this as to be determined. We're still working, still work in progress. Today's red number up there, the to be determined, at this point in time, and appreciate the introduction that Mr. Starburg made earlier, that some of this is still being refined. And while we have some numbers on here that are going in a, the light, while we have some numbers that are going in a better direction. For example, we have found, continuing working with the fire department, that the transfer to support the paramedic originally anticipated at $1.3 million will be $800,000. There's a whole nother story to talk to about that. But keeping them literally where they're at right now, that we're able to diminish that and some other changes, that we are actually able to reduce initially what looked like our remaining shortfall. But as we've continued to work through the actual budgets and budget submitted by the departments, we've also found we have somewhat of a reduction in our resources and an increase in some expenditures. Many of these just literally broadly spread across many different accounts in smaller amounts, but adding up to significant numbers that are to be determined amount at this point in time is approximately $1.8 million. So not to have that as a surprise tomorrow as we're going into this. We were at 1.3, we are now at $1.8 million. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's what we said too. Yeah. Now, with this, this is not taking into, I don't know if we have the next slide. The strategies for determining, okay, the strategies for determining this remain the same. We have the two and a half percent further reductions to consider that we would undoubtedly be bringing back into council tomorrow, ongoing negotiation efforts that are in place and some other options. But we are still working on that to be determined number.
Okay, anything else? Any other questions or comments? All right, then, need a motion-
So 10 o'clock tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
10 till 7:00 PM?
Yes, and we'll start, I-
Till whenever.
Some individuals were here-
Whenever.
Yeah. I know some individuals were here specifically for police this afternoon with the hopes that we might be able to do it and apologies that we weren't able to get to police. But they will be first up tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock or shortly after 10 o'clock.
We'll bring coffee. All right, we'll need a, bring some boxing gloves.
We'll have to if we want to drink it.
Need a motion to adjourn.
They'll move.
Second. They are adjourned.